Okay, the time is now six thirty. I'm gonna call this session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? And, Mr. Wells, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Julie, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Favella, here. Councilmember Burkle.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton, here. Mayor Protem Chipman.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here.
All right. Mr. Stewart, are there any late changes to the agenda tonight?
No late changes, Mayor.
Okay, no late changes. We will go ahead and move forward with public comment. It is now time for a public comment. Anyone wishing to address council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time. Please state your name and limit comments to three minutes. Written comments may be submitted to clerk party to the meeting. For, uh, for, use a raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen, of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand, and press star six to mute or unmute. And please state your name, and we will go forward to public comment. Is there anybody wishing to give public comment this evening? Come on up and...
Hello, my name is Jen McDonald. You need my address too, right?
No.
No, no address today.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool. I am the commander of the American Legion here in Ridgefield. We support veterans, helping veterans. If you've ever seen on the wonderful holidays we have around here where the flags are adorned down Pioneer and Main Street and the roundabouts, that's us. We started that on the Fourth of July, two thousand and ten. Thank you, thank you. We're actually getting ready to go through refurbishment program with the Scouts. We have an Eagle Scout who's volunteered to help refurbish all the flags and help us get some new ones put together, too. We used to store our flags in the old city jail, and when that got torn down, we kinda had to scramble to find a place that worked for us. We like, we like the downtown area because we have a lot of people that come down on foot to help us, and we have to go back and forth to get the flags, to load the truck and, and put them up and get the plugs and all of that stuff. So, we were able to get a volunteer at the old fire station here in Ridgefield temporarily, so that's where we're storing them at the moment. But if there is any opportunity of another place, that would be better for kind of a long-term solution, we would be very thankful.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Anybody else wishing to give public comment this evening? All right, Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Mr. Jones.
Oh, mister...
Sir.
Yeah, calling up.
Yeah, I was here a while back. My name's Chuck Jones. I was here a while back, and I was talking to a member about coming and talking about our post forty-four. Thought that was a good idea. Well, it didn't turn out to be a good idea, and so, I should've gone to our meeting. I'm an officer, and I should've gone to our meeting and had it approved and what I was gonna say. So, some of the things I said, I wish I wouldn't have, but I came to apologize to the mayor and to the city council. And I represent all of the members, so, and I went and apologized because I was passionate about our post, and I got a little carried away, but anyway, I use, I was using my emotions instead of thinking, so, had a couple. Anyway, I guess, in the service, I learned that there's no such thing as excuses, it's only reasons. So, I guess my reason was, I wasn't thinking, and I wish you could blame it on my age and I'm eighty or demented, but I can't, so, anyway, I apologize to the mayor and to all the city council.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, anybody else wishing to give a public comment in the room? Ms. Julie, anybody online tonight?
Not seen anyone online, Mayor.
Okay. Just real quick, I know that we are not a staff report, so I'd just like to kinda break the rules a little bit, but, Mr. Stewart, we were talking yesterday in our briefing actually about flag storage. I don't know, is that something you can provide an update on publicly tonight?
Your meeting, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Happy to provide you an update.
Could you please do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide an update. Council members of the community, Steve Stewart, I'm the city manager. After the last meeting when Mr. Jones spoke about the potential for finding a place for flag storage, the mayor and the council requested that, that I begin work to help find a place. So, in helping meet what the council wanted as a priority, we started working with staff to look at options, and what we've come to is that we have space at the old Public Works Operations Center where the sewer treatment facility is, on the northern part of that yard. It's a secured area where we would need to develop some idea of how to provide access early mornings when the flags are going up, but we have space to put a container there where we could actually create storage for the flags. So, not only is there a space for it, and we've confirmed with the sewer district, they don't need that space, our public works have confirmed that that would be a good place for it. We've also done some due diligence to figure out how much it would cost to get a twenty, twenty-foot container that has venting, similar to what we've used on other things, so that you make sure that you don't get mold issues or anything like that. Relatively low cost to be able to do that. We have funds available through our Community Partners Program that can help defray any costs associated with buying a container. We would wanna work with Commander McDonald and, on the application, to be a community partner, and that provides access to twelve fifty, to twelve hundred dollars in, in grant money from the city for our community partners, and certainly, the American Legion is obviously one of those, but we'd wanna work on that. But yeah, it is something that we can do downtown at the old Public Works Operations. It would be secure, we would have a container, we'd work with the Legion to have them be able to work and create the racks that they would need for the flags, but it is absolutely possible if that is something that you would like us to pursue.
Okay, great, yeah. I think, I think we like that. I know that's been an issue for a long time, and we'd love to be able to kinda figure out our solution with you. So, if you'd be willing, Commander McDonald, to follow up with Ms. Notenares, she can get you going on the partnership application. If you have any other questions about it or whatever, we're happy to talk to you more about it, but I think that Ms. Notenares would be a great resource for you, and we'll get that going.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on with our meeting to the consent agenda. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Council, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to, we have a couple of presentations this evening, and we're gonna start, our first presentation is with the Clark County Community Services, and this is about their five-year consolidation plan. So, we have Ms. Elizabeth McNanny here. Oh, you don't look like...
You also have Elizabeth McNanny.
Oh, there you go, you're both here, okay. Yeah, I was looking down, and you didn't look like an Elizabeth to me, so...
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Michael Torres, I'm program manager with Three with Clark County Community Services. Clark County Community Services receives community development block grant funds and home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are required to do a plan for the expenditure of those funds. It's a five-year consolidated plan. The city of Ridgefield participates in that through the Urban County Policy Board, they're a member. There's an inter-local agreement in place on how that works to get the funds out to the community. So, we have some consultants that are developing, that are helping us, working with us to develop the plan. Elizabeth McNanny from Resource Consultants is gonna be doing the presentation, and we're available for questions after that.
Great, thank you very much. I'm Elizabeth McNanny, mayor and council staff. I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about this planning process. I live just a little ways up the Columbia in Moser, Oregon, so I'm really happy to be doing some work so close to home. So, this is really special for me, as I do this planning work across the country, right now from Virginia to Yakima. So, next slide. Tonight, we'll do just a really brief overview of entitlement funds and the consolidated plan process, next steps, and just sharing any questions, any feedback you have, we'd love. So, a community is eligible to receive block grant funds through HUD as a community development block grant if you are a city that has fifty thousand people or more, or you are an urban county with two hundred thousand residents or more outside of entitlement cities within that county. So, it has to be a population outside of Vancouver's population, that is how Clark County became eligible. There's a formula that HUD utilizes to determine the funding amount. There is a YouTube video that you can watch if you're really interested about how that happens. It's riveting, super riveting, but they, they use a formula that looks at housing stock and poverty and population and things like that. So, with CDBG funds, those can typically be used to provide communities with opportunities for public facilities and public infrastructure improvements, that sort of thing. It can also support the development of housing as well as rehab and things like that. So, housing and community development activities, it targets households at eighty percent or below of the area median income. With the home investment partnership as a participating jurisdiction, those funds are typically used directly for, you know, home services. So, it can be used to buy rehab, you know, that sort of thing. Housing, multifamily, single-family, and it targets, multifamily targets sixty percent or below with most of the funds from home partnership. The county also uses some of those funds for TIBRA, tenant-based rental assistance, which is really important to help community members stay housed in safe, suitable housing. Here are the income limits for this program year. We are currently in program year two thousand and twenty-four, and program year two thousand and twenty-five will start July one, and we'll have some slightly updated income limits probably before then. HUD releases those annually. So, you can see that for CDBG resources, a family of four can receive services or apply for rehab or things like that if they earn ninety-four thousand, four hundred dollars or less per year. And for home, direct home investment partnership, it can be with families, a family of four, at seventy thousand, eight hundred or less. So, those vary a little bit year to year, but not usually too much. So, with CDBG, you have to meet a national objective to have an eligible activity, and most often, so you're looking at the HUD objectives, which are decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded opportunities primarily for low and moderate income people in the community. So, the national objectives all kind of fall under that, and the first one, the most often used, is benefit to LMI, low mod income households and community members. So, that could be an area benefit if you're looking at sidewalks or parks, it could be public facilities, and it can be direct services. You can also use slum blight, it's a little bit more challenging to use, and there are some pitfalls in using that, and there are restrictions on utilizing slum blight dollars, but it is possible. Urgent need is also a national objective. You would never use that unless HUD tells you you can. It's primarily for natural disasters that have happened, they have to have happened within the last eighteen months, pose a serious threat to safety and health in the community, and there must be no other funds that can be utilized to address that. So, you wouldn't use it unless HUD tells you yes. So, core principles are, again, benefiting low income, low to moderate income persons or communities within Clark County. Community participation. We've been out in the public having community meetings and listening sessions and one-on-one meetings with stakeholders and talking with councils. Leveraging and partners, because we'll talk about the amount of money that comes in, there's not enough money to solve any one problem. So, it's really about leveraging and partnerships. And strategic and targeted investments. Where can the investment come in to be leveraged, to make the most impact within the community? So, here are some of the eligible activities in Clark County. They undertake housing rehabilitation as well as doing some economic development activities that are primarily focused on microenterprises, so small businesses that are owned by low and moderate income households in Clark County that really can help them expand and receive the technical assistance and services they need to be successful. Can also fund public services, and again, public facilities and infrastructure, and it goes to planning and admin also. There are some things that are definitely not eligible. Fundraising is one of those, general expenses of government is another, and typically, buildings used for the general conduct of government are not eligible to receive funding. There's one caveat, that ADA upgrades are typically eligible or may be eligible. And the last one, maintenance and repairs, you can pay to upgrade a park or build a park in an eligible area, but you can't pay to mow the lawn. So, activities affecting multifamily structures with CDBG, at least fifty-one percent of those units must be reserved for households that qualify as low to moderate income. Single-family development, homebuyer assistance, or development of single-family homes, each home must qualify as, household must qualify as low to moderate income. And no project is ever eligible, public facilities and infrastructure, if you do a sidewalk project, that's not eligible unless at least fifty-one percent of the, the households in the service area qualify as low mod income. The home program's a little bit different, it's pretty prescriptive. Again, the city uses some of their, or the county uses some of their money for tenant-based rental assistance, TIBRA, as we call it in the HUD world, and buying rehabilitating affordable housing for rental or homeownership. Homebuyer assistance is also an eligible activity in some cases under home. It's a little more prescriptive, as you can see, there's not as many things that you can do with this funding. So, the funding amounts for this current year, program year twenty-four, the CDBG award was just over one point five million dollars. So, again, there's not enough money in the bucket to solve any one problem, that's where that strategic investment with partnerships comes in. The planning and administration cap is twenty percent. There's a lot of planning that has to happen and monitoring and reporting to HUD with the CDBG program, so they've set that cap at twenty percent. And the public service cap, if you're doing direct public services or you have a stakeholder or a subrecipient doing public services in the community with CDBG funds, that is capped at fifteen percent of the allocation amount. The home award for this year was just over half a million dollars, and because it's a little more prescriptive, the planning and admin is capped at ten percent. So, here is kind of the allocation history for some direct allocations to projects in Ridgefield, and this goes back to the year two thousand and covers the last few con plans, obviously. So, you can see the piece of the pie there that Ridgefield has received. And here are some of the funded projects, and these are, I mean, these are some really impactful projects. These dollars can come into communities and really make a difference. They can be leveraged funds, and typically, CDBG funds can be used as match funds even with other federal dollars. There are some restrictions on that, but usually they can be. And just looking at the Ridgefield profile, this is the most recent HUD information, so things may have changed a little bit, but we have to go with the, with the numbers HUD gives us, so, you have, when we're looking at this, your population and your households, your poverty rate is lower than Washington State's as a whole here, and lower than some other cities within the Clark County bucket for CDBG funding. What's the planning process like? So, the five-year consolidated plan is kind of about big buckets, it's broad strategies and objectives, and it's looking at goals and needs in the community. And then included with that is the first-year annual action plan, which dives a little more into what do you do in that first year? What are the smaller buckets that you're going to be funding? And here are the components of the consolidated plan, and when you talk about like a housing needs assessment or a housing market analysis, it's not what we think of as a really broad housing needs assessment or market analysis. These are pretty prescriptive in HUD land, and ask some very specific questions to help you set your objectives and your goals for the program. And then the strategic plan is really about the budget and some of those actual objectives, and the one-year annual action plan is how you will be spending the money that particular So, it starts with needs, and those are usually just a few, and I often suggest that you use HUD's objectives, decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded opportunities primarily for low and moderate income residents in the community. That captures pretty much every single thing you could do, and honestly, that needs category doesn't go anywhere else. It doesn't inform anything, it's a legacy in the planning system that HUD uses. Goals are a little more descriptive, they get down to what are you actually doing? Public infrastructure and facilities might be a goal. And then projects are included in the annual action plan, and you'll be a little more descriptive. So, public infrastructure and public facilities might be broken into two projects in the annual action plan. And then activities are on the other side, those are not really included except as descriptions of what you already know you're doing in any of the plans. Those are on the other side where you're reporting your accomplishments and discrete activities to HUD. So, this is what it would look like in the plan and then also on the reporting side. Create a suitable living environment. Public facilities and public infrastructure upgrades might be a goal, and then public infrastructure improvements to benefit low, moderate income residents in Clark County. And then Hall and Elm Street improvements would be the actual activity. So, the next steps, we are, we have some surveys out, I'm actually going to send the links, it'll be on the next page, but I'm gonna send those electronically, it's a little bit easier to deal with them that way. And those surveys are really important. We're hearing some great information from the community, we're continuing to do stakeholder interviews, and that's been really key in helping to identify some of the objectives for the next five years, and targeted meetings. We were at the Vancouver Housing Authority Board Meeting today, meeting with some of the stakeholders and folks in the community. We'll have the presentation to the county council and adoption, hopefully, and then once they know, once the county knows how much money they're going to have, which could be May, who knows, whenever HUD gets that information out, the plan can actually be submitted, once we get real budget numbers in. We're gonna use this, this year's budget numbers to put together the draft plan, but we have to put real numbers in, and HUD doesn't allow you to submit until you have those real numbers. So, here are some of the things that we're hearing in the community, that, you know, affordable, safe housing is really important. Services for domestic violence victims have come up over and over again in the surveys that we're here, that we're seeing. And then that behavioral health care as well as access to standard health care in a timely fashion is really important to the low mod income community in Clark County. So, I am happy to stand for questions, but we will be taking surveys until the beginning of May, through the beginning of May, and we would love it if you would share the survey, and I will get those links to you. And we're in, we're, we will be in a public comment period from the fourth, so next Fri, a week from tomorrow, until May sixth, when the county council hopefully adopts the plan. And we would love feedback, and we would love for you to actually read it, or at least the executive summary or the summary pages, if you, if you would, and offer comment. So, I would happily stand for questions or feedback.
Great, okay, thank you so much for the presentation. Council, any questions for Ms. McNanny tonight? Start with Councilor Davis.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, I have one that kinda goes back to the qualification piece, and this might be more one for Mr. Torres. So, it's been a topic of conversation, not in our community, but, you know, a little further south, about Vancouver annexation. If Vancouver absorbs their entire urban growth boundary, do we still qualify as a county?
If, so I do not know the population numbers in the growth, the growth area. I think we would. We're above fifty thousand, and we are going to be above two hundred thousand. I think it would stay, it would remain that even if Vancouver became the second largest city in the state.
Or would it, would it be Vancouver that qualifies, or would it be...
Vancouver is already its own entitlement community, so they receive, they receive the funds already, they do their own planning, they have their consolidated plan. I think we would continue to receive our funds. It'd be a smaller, the formula would mean we'd probably receive less, but we would still continue to, to do that.
Okay, that was kinda what my curiosity, because it was like, the urban county with a population of at least two hundred thousand, I thought you said it's two hundred thousand outside of the metro area, right?
Yes.
So, if Vancouver goes up to three fifty, and the, if the...
It'd be close.
...the whole county is less than five fifty, would that make it so that we were no longer eligible?
It, it would be, it would be close. It depends how fast they do it, it depends what areas and what the population is at the time.
Okay.
It'd be very close.
That was just something stood out, and I was just kinda curious about that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions from councilors? Just a quick one from me, real quick. I actually sit on the Urban County Policy Board, and it's, it's been really interesting getting involved in that, and we did the awards last month, but you know, like, the last couple of meetings I've attended, there has been talk about how dynamics at the federal level have impacted potential funding. You're smiling because you knew this question was probably coming, but there was, there was some speculation that the awards amounts would be decreased. Has there any been, any developments in the last few weeks on that, or do we know where we're going with it?
There have been some developments with the continuing resolution that goes through the end of this fiscal year. Award... Award amounts are likely to stay pretty consistent. Now they go up and down every single year, no matter what, just because of the way that HUD does their formula calculations. So they're looking again at population, housing stock, poverty rates, things like that. So they do have some fluctuation. All bets are off next year. And, you know, there could still be some opportunity for rescission and things like that, but we haven't seen, we're not hearing any word. And I've been on some calls with headquarters recently, so.
Great. Yeah. Thank you. I don't, were you gonna, okay. Okay. Good. Yeah. Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Wells?
The question I have, I think I heard the AMI for Ridgefield is 117, 550. Is that correct? Is that just Ridgefield city limits?
Yes.
Or Ridgefield 98, 642?
Ridgefield city limits, I believe. Yeah.
Great. Other questions for, anybody else want to say? Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation. Very helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. We will move on. We have a second presentation this evening. And this next one is from Clark Cowlets Fire Rescue, and this is just a general update. Chief Moore's here for us tonight. Over to you, sir.
Good. Good. Thank you. This should be a slightly longer one because we have a lot of good things going on and a lot of things to talk about. I'm going to go over our general update and then talk a little bit about ambulance service that went into effect in January this year. I want to talk about station location and so we'll get started with our general update. Thank you. So, wait till, we can advance the slides. So Clark Cowlets Fire Rescue is a special district in the state of Washington. It is a fire district. Our primary responsibility is fire suppression within the area. And then the governing body can decide to do other services if they like. And what's very common right here in our district and across the state of Washington is for fire services to provide emergency medical services also. So we also provide EMS. We're a combination department, so we have what we call career firefighters. These firefighters are employed full-time as firefighters. We have volunteers. And so our volunteer corps predominantly is responsible for operating our water tenders. They don't go into burning buildings. Many of them were volunteer firefighters before and going into burning buildings, they said, that's enough for me. So they bring our water tenders at night. If you get outside of the city areas and you get outside of an area where PUD has fire hydrants, we have to bring our own water to the fire. So those volunteers do that for us. This last year, we responded to 5,682 calls. That's about a 7.1% increase over last year. Last year was a very unusual year. It was flat. We had actually a slight decrease from the year before, which is not generally the case in firing EMS across the nation. It tends to go up about 5% to 7% a year. So we believe that some of the actions of our CARES team, that they were taken to help do some falls reduction and direct people out of the 911 system was working. Next slide, please. So this is our service area. We cover 125 square miles in northwest Clark County and southwest Cowlets County, including city of Ridgefield, city of La Center, city of Woodland, at the Cowlets Indian Reservation, and then the rest is unincorporated Clark County. We run six stations, one in Ridgefield, one in La Center, one in Woodland, one in Charter Oak over by Lewisville Highway, one at Dollar's Corner. And then we have a shared station that we operate two-thirds of the time. And Fire District Six to the South operates one-third of the time and it helps cover the fairgrounds area and really is a way for efficiency for, because it would be more expensive for each district to have a station in that area to cover it. So by sharing that station, we're able to see some cost efficiency there. We have 14 miles of freeway. We have 43 miles of waterfront when you take it all in. We have a lot of complex buildings in the district and some complex manufacturing. So it creates some real challenges for us. Next slide. So what do we do? Well, we do fire suppression. If it's on fire somewhere in the district, we're responsible to make sure it goes out. And so anything from structured fires to brush fires, wildland fires, vehicle fires, all the different things you think were, might generate a fire, we are responsible for it. We also have contracts with our partners in the joining fire districts and we do something called mutual aid. So if it's a big fire, we can't handle it with our resources, it's automatic that they start coming. If it's a fire or other incident near the border and we need help, we automatically call for that assistance from others. We also do have what we call BLS or Basic Life Support Train folks. Those are EMTs as well as our advanced life support personnel. Those are our paramedics. The residents of the district supported us in an emergency medical services levy in 2022, which allowed us to upstaff and we now run a paramedic on every rig every day as well as increased our staffing to three per apparatus per day. That really raised the level of service across the district. When we get to the other slide, I saw that I made a mistake and I actually put the wrong staffing level that we have in Ridgefield. But in addition to that, we're part of a regional technical rescue team. So the city of Vancouver Fire Department, Fire District Six to the South, and CCFR combined to make a technical rescue team. So if there's somebody down a cliff and we need a rope system to get to them, if there's somebody in a confined space, a trench collapse, a structural collapse, these are incidents that don't happen very often, but when they do, they're very risky for the patients, the victims, they're very risky for the responders. So we collaborate, the team meets once a month, does 12 drills a year. And then we each carry a certain amount of equipment and we respond out anywhere. And we're actually the technical team for what's called Region Four. So for Skamania, Clark, Cowlets, and Waukiahcom County, if there's one of those types of calls anywhere in the four county area, these three departments come together to make the team that goes and supports the other first responders there to get the patients out. We also have a swiftwater rescue team. So if anybody has a water problem in the Columbia River, in either fork of the Lewis River, in some of the lakes around within the district, we keep people on duty each day with their dry suits and their swim gear, flippers, and they're ready to jump in the water and make a rescue if, if necessary. We also have our community risk reduction team that does traditional fire marshal services as well as some other support. So next slide, please. So we talked a little bit about fire marshal services. That's plans review, fire inspections, fire investigations, and public education. So we have two full-time deputy fire marshals and one halftime. And if any of you have worked with John Zanzi, who is our halftime person, he was retired as a fire chief out of California, brought an incredible amount of skills to us and just a real great level of customer service. He is retiring for good in May, and so we're going to replace that and make that a full-time position. And we have an internal candidate who is one of our firefighter paramedics that wants to go into the fire marshal's office. So he's going to be moving over there. And we'll have three full-time deputy fire marshals. Next slide, please. Then we have our CARES team. You've probably heard a lot about our CARES team. We were the first in the region and nobody else really wanted to get involved. Our commissioners recognized the need, supported us in getting some funding through contracts to get two different teams on board. One is the co-response mental health team that goes out and assists people who are having mental health crisis. So if, if law enforcement or fire EMS goes on a call and they say, I, this is not really somebody who needs EMS, they don't need law enforcement, they're having mental crisis, they call on that team. And so that team responds anywhere in CCFR's district as well as Fire District Three, which is the District of the East, Battleground, Hawkinson, Vennersburg area. We are working to get other agencies in the county to use that team also. We recently received funding through the University of Washington that's going to allow us to be the 988 responder in this area. And that team will move from 80 hours a week to 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we're anticipating later this year. We also have a referral or follow-up team. They go out and do home safety inspections and work with people who have been discharged from the hospital. We have contracts with Peace Health as well as Legacy. And when they discharge somebody from the hospital who's going to need a follow-up to check on their wound, to check on medication administration, just on their, their safety, we collect contract money for that and we go out and do those checks. That was the example I gave where in 2023, from 22 to 23, we reduced our number of falls by almost 50%. People falling in their homes because we're going out, we're installing grad bars. The AdSwa, the Area Aging, or Area Agency on Disabilities and Aging provides a lot of that equipment for us. For that CARES team though, I want to point out that there is no EMS funding levy dollars and no fire levy dollars going for that. That is all funded through outside contracts through other agencies. Chief Mike Jackson, who attends a lot of the meetings here, heads up that team's been doing a great job with that. So we're very big on accountability. We have a five-person elected board of fire commissioners. They're elected at large throughout the district. We operate under a balanced budget and we have really worked hard for financial stability over the years. It was one of my chief goals when I came here nine years ago was ensuring good financial stability and we have worked hard to get there and been able to replace our apparatus over the last, I used to say five years, over the last six years. Got all new fire engines and a ladder truck running out. And the next big thing is to replace a couple of fire stations or build a new fire station, finish building one of them. Our, our meetings are on the same night as your meetings, so four o'clock over at the fire station, if he's come. We always encourage people from the public to come. Thank you. All right. That slide there is supposed to say minimum staffing of six persons per day at our Ridgefield station. So what we run out of the Ridgefield station is a fire ladder truck and that is staffed every day with a minimum of three. And if nobody's on sick leave or vacation, it has four personnel on it. And that is the ideal staffing for a ladder truck. Ladder trucks are a little different than a fire engine because their job is to carry a lot of technical rescue equipment, cut people out of cars if they've been significantly impacted in a crash, do search and rescue for people in a burning building. And an engine company, so we run five engines, one truck per day. The engine company's job is to get a water supply, stretch hose, put the fire out. Well, you can't really run a ladder truck without being able to put a fire out. So our ladder truck is a specialty truck called a Quint and it has pump and hoses on it. And so if they arrive to a fire first, they'll, they'll start fire operations. And then when one of the neighboring fire engines shows up from one of our other stations, they take over fire ups and the truck takes over rescue. And I know I'm getting in the weeds here, but that's the difference sometimes when you go, why are they driving around this big ladder truck? Well, because we don't have a fire engine at this station yet, so this one functions as both. We also have a medic unit. We, the medic unit became staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, January 1 of this year. And they do high priority medical calls in the district. And when I finish this slideshow, I'm going to get into a little bit more about the ambulance system. We have a reserve ladder truck there. We have a special rescue unit. So when one of those technical rescue calls come out, the special rescue team takes that because it carries more of the equipment that we don't want to carry on the ladder truck every day. We have a water tender staffed by volunteers when needed. And then we have a battalion chief that's on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are in charge of the district, all operations that go on. Next slide, please. So a little bit on the statistics, the numbers are small here on our response volume there. And part of it reflects us moving some units around, but in 2022, the station, in the station area, which is most of Ridgefield and a little bit of county area around it, had 1,363 calls. Last year we were at 1,409. And then you see some unit responses that don't match up. And that's because sometimes the units go to another station area because someone's out of service. So if, for example, Engine 23 at La Center is on a call and another call comes in in their first response area, Truck 21 from the Ridgefield station would go on that call. If Truck 21's out of service on a call in Ridgefield, then one of the other stations around would come up and cover them. And so in their particular runs, it may look a little bit different. Last year we had Rescue 21 because it wasn't running as an ambulance. It's the same unit, but it was in a different configuration and we only staffed it when, when there was nobody on sick or vacation. So it wasn't staffed every day. And so it started being staffed in May. That's when it went in service and only ran 378 calls last year. That's because it was not 24/7. As of January 1, it is 24/7. Then you see the calls for our specialty rescues and our battalion chief in there. So the total number of, of unit responses out of Station 21 last year was about 2,360. One of our big challenges, next slide, please, is, is a new fire station. So we're not currently meeting our response time goals in Ridgefield. And so our response time goals in each of the three cities is a 60-second, what we call 60-second turnout time. That's from the time of the alarm at the station until the rig is moving, 60-second on EMS calls, 90-second on fire calls. And that's because there's more specialty equipment to put on when going to a fire call. And then in unincorporated county, the turnout times are the same. Now, when we get to the actual travel time, from the time we, the wheels start rolling till we pull up and stop in front of the incident address, we target five minutes of travel time in the cities and eight minutes of travel time in the county. And that's because in the county areas, it's not as dense, so it takes, so the calls are generally farther apart, but the calls are also not as frequent. Most of the calls are focused in our urban areas. But in Woodland, for example, we were meeting our response times for EMS last year 71.15% of the time. In the urban area of La Center, 63% of the time, but in the urban area of Ridgefield, only 27% of the time. That's on EMS. We make our fires 33% of the time versus 79 and 60 in the other communities. And the reason for that is the community has grown, right? And so density or, or population is what drives call volume for us. So as the west side of Ridgefield has grown, a lot of the calls are over there and our primary station right now is just east of the freeway. So it's a long response time over there. And I would say that these numbers were consistent before the road closed for construction. So the, the, the construction right now on Pioneer isn't significantly affecting this. So we know that we need a fire station. We have a fire station, or excuse me, a location right next to the Rourke. And I have to say that all the communities that we serve have done an incredible job over the last few years of growth and managing growth and, and just bringing a lot of amenities into the communities. And it's been, and, and I was recently quoted saying, it's been fascinating watching it. It really has. And I'm very happy for all the communities and what they've been doing. It's, it's great and they, and you have a lot of amenities. And when the Rourke got built, I gotta say, I didn't think it would be that popular. Not as, I knew it'd be popular. I didn't think it'd be as popular as it is. And so with the middle school and the Rourke and the high school, what at one time seemed like a great location, thinking about getting out onto Hillhurst six or eight times a day, rolling lights and siren with everything going on there, it's, it's just not the best place for us right now. So we need to look for a new location for a fire station here on the west side that also is not going to significantly impact the immediate community right there with traffic, children walking, families playing and things like that. So we are in search of a new piece of property and immediately following this, we got some station location work we've been doing that I'm going to show you online. So, so that is a district priority. The commissioners ask me regularly, Commissioner Bartel and Commissioner Berger here, and they've made it very clear to me that building a station in Ridgefield is a priority. So I think that was my last slide there, which I usually have my thank you slide, but I will kind of roll into some, the ambulance information and the station location unless there's questions on what I've talked about so far.
Counsel, any questions on this portion of the, of the presentation for Chief Moore?
No.
You're good to go, chief.
All right. So for ambulance service, Ridgefield is located in what's called EMS District Two. And, and there are three primary EMS districts in the county. One is, is North Country Ambulance, way up in the far north east part of the county. The other one is Camas Washougal Fire Department covering Camas Washougal and some areas, unincorporated areas north of that. And then Vancouver used to be an EMS too. They withdrew in 2015 and they did their own contract with the ambulance provider. And at that time, EMS Two, that's what was left of it was Battleground, Ridgefield, La Center, Woodland, and all the rest of unincorporated Clark County, piggybacked on that contract. And as you've heard me in here many times before talking about, I don't feel that the response times were correct for this area. It's 1959, 90% of the time. The ambulance has 19 minutes and 59 seconds north of 179th Avenue. If you cross the street and get south to 179th, it's 9:59. I guess you gotta draw the line somewhere, but the result was it wasn't serving us here. And so I've been fighting for that for several years. And when I really pushed hard in 2018 to say, hey, we need to, we need a better response time when the five-year mark of the contract happened in 2020, what we were told was if you'd like to pay more money to have an ambulance on duty, you can, but if not, your time's at 1959. So the ambulance contract was up for renewal, 1-1 of '25. And so CCFR went in and fought pretty hard to say, we need a better response time up here. And we were told it was going to cost standby fees or basically public money. Each city as well as unincorporated county was going to have to pay public money for ambulance standby fee to have ambulances around. And I said, well, we have an ambulance license and we have an ambulance and we'd like to help out with that if we can. So the agreement made was that when the new bid went out, that CCFR would be the ambulance provider for high priority patients. provider for high priority patients. And the patients are prioritized one through five. One and two are the highest priorities. That's cardiac chest pain, cardiac arrest, breathing difficulty, you stop breathing completely, a significant traumatic injury where you're bleeding out, and we would become that provider. So in the first, we haven't even done a full three months yet, but a year to date, we've, our ambulance has gone on 453, excuse me, there's been 453 incidents. Our ambulance has taken 364 of them. When we're not available because we're treating a patient, transporting a patient, AMR, the private ambulance provider, still can. So they, they've taken about 84 of those calls. So we're out there making a difference. And where I think it really makes a difference is the response time. So that ambulance is stationed at our Ridgefield Fire Station. In the third, in the fourth quarter of 2023, AMR was not making their time here. And for their times in the CCFR area was 2256, 90% of the time. Okay, so in the first 23 days of March, our 90th percentile, because we don't just do Ridgefield, we do other areas of our district also, we brought it down to 1450. Okay, we brought it down eight minutes. We believe that when revenue for ambulance billing starts rolling in, we will have enough revenue to actually staff a second ambulance and we can bring those times down even better. So we are making a difference here in Ridgefield and throughout the district in getting the right care on scene at the right time for these high priority incidents. And that allows the private provider to still be there in the lower priority incidents where time is not so critical. So, right now, the EMS 2 contract is only good for one year. We piggybacked on the Vancouver contract one more time. So the county councillor, Sue Marshall, county councillor Belkot, and then right now it's a small city rep is council member Overholzer from Battleground. And that rotates to the other small cities on a two-year basis. They are the EMS 2 board and they, we're working with the work group to get an ambulance contract in place for 1-1 of 26, but we anticipate that CCFR will continue to be the priority one and two transport agency in the district. Next thing we want to talk about real quick is station location. So we got Assistant Chief Ben Peeler online. He's doing it from his computer, so if we can share him as a panelist, he's going to pull up and show you some of the areas that we're looking at. While he's doing that, I kind of wanted to talk a little bit, I missed a point out before, but about fire service and how we operate. And we're on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it's very difficult for us to, to know when the demand is going to come, right? So if we knew that we could schedule our, our, our calls during the day, in which days, it'd be a lot easier to schedule the workers. So we have that same, we have 23 people on duty across the district, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to be able to make those responses. And, and that's really what makes it a little difficult when people say, well, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? I would love to operate as a business. If I owned a dump truck in a backhoe, I'd be wanting to scrape dirt and haul it around 24/7 and I could make that work. But in a fire department, you don't want your truck busy 24/7. You want them available in quarters for your emergency. In fact, you want to even be selfish and go, I don't even want them going on your emergency. I want them only on mine. Well, we gotta share a little bit, right? But you really want them in service as much as possible and they've got to be able to make a timely response. So the first thing we got showing here, what Ben is showing is the dots show call frequency. And the bigger the bubble, the more often the call. So if, if you can kind of see where, that's our full district there. And we've got a concentration of calls, not surprisingly, along I-5 where the Caliseneum Reservation is. So as a location, our specific location, that's one of our busiest, is to go to the Alon A Resort there. And then if you come down I-5 a little bit, you'll see that we have a concentration of calls near the Ridgefield Junction. And you see the other concentration to the west, which is probably 45th Royal or, excuse me, Pioneer and Royal. And then you go downtown and there's a concentration of calls downtown. And the rest of them are kind of spread out there. Downtown, La Center has a few. And if the map pulled down, you'd actually see in Woodland, we have a concentration of calls in Woodland also. So what we're trying to do is keep that, that chessboard with the right number of pieces on at any given time to make it to where all of our calls are. So with that, we're going to go and, and show what our current situation is where Fire Station 21 is just on the other side of the freeway, the areas that it covers. So that green area is everything that Fire Station 21 is responsible to cover. Up above it, the purple area is, is Engine 23 out of La Center. Down below the pink-purpled below is where the Fairgrounds Fire Station comes up and meets. So really what we have happen is, is that fire station meets the station 21 right about Kennedy Farms as a housing development. So if somebody calls in there, they either get the Fairgrounds Station and just a few houses away, they may get the station from here. So our issue is that we have a lot of calls on the west side of Ridgefield and it's taken a long time to get there. So it's like right now, the rack, right where we sit, is six to seven minutes drive time from the fire station. The high school is also six to seven minutes. It just takes a slightly different route. I use, had Chief Peeler use his address because he lives at Osprey and Hillhurst, and it's about seven to eight minutes drive time. That's too long to get to an incident if something's on fire or if somebody's not breathing. So one of our first things we did when we started looking around, one of the places we're looking at is Cardi Road at Hillhurst. There was some property there and it would allow us, so he's changing the scenario to say, what would it look like if we had a station at Cardi Road in Hillhurst? And that would allow us to hit the southern end of the district. It would allow us to hit the, the Hillhurst areas. But what it actually did is it took a bunch of calls out of the station out in the south that was already getting good service. So what you see there in the orange, that is the area that a station at Cardi Road would hit. So it would get the, the Hillhurst area pretty good and up to downtown, but it wouldn't get the north ends of downtown. So the rack where we sit today would still be three to four minutes drive. The north side of downtown, Heron Ridge and some of those properties up there, new subdivisions up there, are still quite a ways away. And it actually is too close to the station to the south that was actually being reached pretty adequately. So our next scenario was to look at some city-owned property on Hillhurst by the entrance to the Refuge on Hillhurst. And so when he changes that up, you'll see the map change and the areas that we hit then, because then, in the next one, you'll notice we hit downtown a lot better and the areas north of downtown better. So from that, from that station by the entrance to Refuge to here at the rack would be one to two minutes as opposed to the three to four. And so it really opens it up. Man, oh man. Our, our internet's slow at the fire station. We haven't worked on that today. But as you see what it does is the, the breakover is about 40th and Pioneer. So everything east of 40th would still be the station out off 65th. And everything west of 40th, including up through downtown, would be pretty adequately served. In looking at putting a station there, we would move our marine team there to operate the fire boats, because we do have a fire boat, I forgot to mention, a fire boat and a rescue boat in the, in the Ridgefield Marina. So, so that's an area that's under significant consideration for us. And then third scenario is placing a station at Royal and Pioneer. And what we would do if we have a station in the area of Royal and Pioneer right by Rose Hours is we would take the existing crew from the station at 21 and move them over here. And that's the area that would be covered. But you now see that we would have a good drive time to downtown, to the north side of town, and to the south side of Hillhurst, the areas that aren't being adequately served now. But what happens is the areas on the far side, beyond 85th Avenue up through 99th Avenue, don't get as quick a service because the station's now over here. So we would hold on to that station. It would be our admin center. We would run training out of there, fire marshal's office, carriage teams, everything that we currently do as an admin function and support function, but have a fire station at, at Royal and Pioneer. Until such time that the city grows to the east, the demand comes up to the east, and then the last scenario, and that could be a few years off, but then we would re-staff the station at, on 65th. And we'd have a station on this side. And it essentially remarkably or unremarkably splits it about down the freeway. And so the station on the other side of the freeway serves everything east of there. The station at Pioneer and Royal would serve it west here. So the last two things we've got to figure out right now is, do we want to be on Hillhurst with a small community fire station and keep 65th open? Do we want to build a station at Royal and Pioneer, move the crew there for now, and then as demand happens, as the city grows to the east, move it back over that way? So. Ben, did I miss anything on that?
You did great.
All right. That's kind of a long one there, but I appreciate your time. But hopefully that could shed some light on. Any questions about our station search or, or operations in the district?
Great, thank you, yes, so much. Counsel, any questions for Chief Nor on either one of these topics? Councilor Burkle.
Chief, your calls to downtown Ridgefield, are they pretty much to the two facilities that are functioning in downtown?
Actually, we do not go to 104 Pioneer, now known as 104 Randall, by the way. It comes in both ways when we get dispatched, but we do not go there as often as we used to. We've seen the call volume at that location drop quite a bit. We do go to a location on, on South Hillhurst, 800 blocks of South Hillhurst fairly regularly, but they've made some staff changes there that has actually slowed it down there. So our, our calls downtown are fairly consistent and they are mostly in residences.
Thank you.
Great, Counsel, any other questions for Chief? Councilor Davis?
Yeah. I would just, I really admire you guys for taking the initiative on the, the cares piece. I think that's such an important element of our community that kind of gets overlooked. And so, I mean, that's, that's my comment, is I really appreciate you guys making that a priority and figuring out how to make it work. And I, I really hope that we can continue to support that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We've, we've had some incredible success stories there and it really is just getting people the right resources. Sometimes they thought the only, the only resource they have is 911 and it's not, we get them in the right way. One thing I'd offer to all of you is you can come along anytime for a ride along, give us a call, we'll get you on for a few hours. And while the road construction's going on, we have the opportunity to do some training at a house at the old Lottie Farm. And so anybody that wants to get out some turnouts, put on a breathing apparatus and get a little hot, get a little dirty, come on in. When that gets scheduled, we'll get you in there. But yeah, it's a great opportunity to see that.
Looking forward to it.
She's going to be the volunteer for all of us.
Do you have a question or comment?
Yeah. Chief, do you know if we're going to be able to do that training burn before April 15?
I will have to check with the training officers, but not likely. They're coordinating with the construction that's going on there. We have to make sure that, with some other things, the water supply is correct and all. And the hydrants are occasionally getting shut off in that, in that section because of the move of the mains and things like that. So we just need to coordinate that.
Okay. And you are aware your cadets are leaving for their trip, April 15?
But they, but they'll be back. Because the cadets always help us out. We have, one thing I didn't mention, we have a cadet program here that serves, there's three departments in the county doing it. We have an incredible success rate with our high school cadets that go into firing EMS, some of them go in law enforcement, military, or the trades, but they get a good opportunity to learn what it is at firing EMS. So I don't know when it's going to happen, but it is going to.
Other questions or comments? Councilor Burkle.
Just one more, Chief. Of your 5,682 calls, how many are medical emergency or what percentage would you suggest would be medical emergency?
So our EMS calls run about 70% of call volume. And it's higher in some districts, down, the fire district to the south of us at Fire District 6, they run about 85% medical, but they have several facilities that, that generate a lot of calls there and some other density issues. We run about 70% fire EMS, 10%, excuse me, 70% EMS, 10% fires and 20% other calls, car crashes. We've really been able to reduce the number of car crashes on the freeways we go on, on the freeway. We don't go on just all of them now. There has to be a confirmed injury or a high mechanism. But that's pretty consistent. Our volume is a little lower than most departments.
Thank you.
As a percentage, yeah. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, Counsel? Okay, I'll just close out just by saying I just, I, you know, we appreciate your partnership. I know it's always been a good one and for the service you provide to Ridgefield, it's, you know, it's obviously necessary, but it's very appreciated and looking forward to having a new station on this side. I know that we're kind of in cahoots with that together to find a new location for you. And so we're looking forward to expanding that partnership and getting some service on this side. So, yes, great. Thank you, thank you for coming out. Cahoots, it's a good word, right?
Great word.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we're going to move on. We have a few items of business to get through tonight. Our first item of business is a second reading of ordinance number 1442. This is the amendment to the Sanderling Park Development Agreement. And Mr. Stewart's going to give us a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the community, this is a second reading for ordinance number 1442. This is an ordinance presenting a second amendment to a development agreement between the city and Polish Homes at Sanderling Park. This second amendment is a second amendment to an agreement that was originally formed in 2008 and that was originally the first amendment of which was adopted, and forgive me, I don't have that, I believe it was 2017. So the second amendment before he does a few things. The first thing that it did is it specified the improvements that would be built by the developer of this community that might be either traffic impact fee credit or park impact fee credit eligible. So there are improvements, including a south collector roadway and connection to the east. There are park improvements, about 2.75 acres of parkland, and there are system trail improvements that are all eligible for credit. The second thing that it does is specify how those credits would be generated, how they would be allotted, and in what timeframe. We went through all of that in the first reading. There were no changes between first and second reading. The other piece of this that was changed between first and second reading was the ownership and maintenance associated with the park itself. The community park that is being anticipated, there are multiple ownership and maintenance models. The original concept that was in the first reading was that the ownership would rest with the city, the maintenance would be done by the homeowners association of Sanderling Park. After conversations with the developer and with council, it was determined that a different model be brought forward to you. There have been conversations between first and second reading to come up with that. The model that is before you this evening on second reading is that the ownership of the park would rest with the park, with the city. The maintenance of the park would be done by the city, but that the homeowners association would provide a contribution for a share of that maintenance that would be necessary. The maintenance costs were determined by speaking with our public works officials, looking at potential costs associated with maintaining the park and the system trails. It was determined that would be approximately a quarter FTE or 10 hours a week on average that would be required for that. And that the share of contribution from the private developer and then the HOA would be half of that and thus one eighth of an FTE or $10,000 annualized. The $10,000 annual contribution would be subject to an inflationary increase to assure that it does not fall behind the actual costs and that would be done at CPI. That cost would be, that compensation would occur on the 31st of January every year. It would be memorialized in the CCNRs and a plat note as well. There are no other changes that were suggested or requested. I'm happy to answer any questions about this second reading and would open it up for those questions and turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So Counsel, this is second reading for this one. Any questions or comments based off of any information presented tonight? Counselor Wells, we'll go to you first.
The only question I have, is there anything that will change if it takes more than 10 hours a week for maintenance for city crew? You've got a $10,000 annual payment, but what happens if it takes them 20 hours a week?
So that would be something that we would have to go back to the developer. And this is a contract, a development agreement is a contract between parties. So it would be something that if the city and the city council, forgive me, I thought I was going to say, if the city and city council do determine that the costs are higher than originally anticipated, it would be something that we would then want to would be something that we would then want to go back to that developer or HOA. There's nothing built into this development agreement amendment. This language is consistent with the language that we applied for the Paradise Point subdivision and the costs associated with that. The inflationary index that's built into it does provide some upward mobility of that, of the compensation to be able to address any increases over time. But if there was a significant change in that, it is something that we would have to come back to, another amendment of the development agreement.
I think there should be something in the contract to have that come into effect.
Are you suggesting like a review period?
Yeah, right. Every, every three years, have a review period?
Okay.
That is certainly something that would be appropriate as an amendment to, what is it, before the body?
Counsel, any discussion on, on Counselor Wells's comments? Anybody have any thoughts on that? I wouldn't be opposed to a review period, maybe if it's every three to five years or something like that, just to make sure that we have a mechanism in case it does. I don't think it's a real concern from my end, but I could see it protecting ourselves and the city's interest in that. Counselor Hamilton?
Yes, thank you. I agree. I think that the opportunity to go back and just review things is important. I think things are ever-changing around here, and just if we front-load this now to prevent a problem later, I think it makes more sense.
Great. Okay, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely in support of a review period. Just to, how many roofs are in this total, in this development, Claire?
400 or something?
Approximately 400.
Yeah, 400, okay. So, I like this model, I just want to do the math, because it shakes out to about 25 bucks a year per roof, the $10,000. And I, I like the model in that those are going to be the primary users of that park, but it is a public park, and they're paying for, for everything through, you know, the taxes they pay and everything else, but knowing that this is primarily for them, I just really like how that shakes out, and I was just curious how that, you know, how that math turned out, yeah? Yeah?
Okay, great. Other comments or even questions for staff on this? That's one, okay. Well, if that's the case, then we can move forward, but before we move forward, I'm going to have Ms. Julie to read the ordinance into the record.
Thank you. Ordinance number 1442, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, approving second amendment to the development agreement with Polish Homes at Sandaling Park for park, trails, and road dedication allocation of impact fee credits.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion, Counsel.
Are we doing it as amended?
First, so the, the proper form would be to bring the motion before the body and then amend that motion?
Okay, right, yes. Okay.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
I don't have the motion right now.
Should we have the wording?
The wording, it would just be as presented.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1442 as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance number 1442 as presented. Counsel discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that motion and have a review of it every four years. I'll split the difference.
Okay, the, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Is, there's been amendment before the council that has been moved and seconded to amend the motion to include a review period to the developer agreement to every four years?
And Mayor, if I, just seeking clarification from you on this, is the motion to amend to review the entire development agreement every four years, or the maintenance costs every four years?
Maintenance costs was my intent.
And is that, so was that the intent of the second or as well? Okay.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
A review period amendment for every review period for every four years for the maintenance costs associated with the park. Any discussion on that, Counsel? Go ahead, Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, are we considering that to be in perpetuity or just at one, four-year down the road? Every four years? I just wanted to clarify.
Every, it sounds like every four years in perpetuity. Not a good word.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, we'll vote on the, it's the amendment first, yes, so we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, amendment carries, and then back to the motion. Any further discussion, Counsel? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
I will call roll, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you, yeah.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Favella?
Aye.
Councilmember Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, thank you very much, Counsel. Moving on to our second item of business tonight is the second reading of ordinance number 1447. This is the amendments to Ridgefield Municipal Code, Chapter 8.18, Park Rules and Regulations. And for the staff report, we'll go to Mr. Corey Crownheart.
Thank you, Mayor, and Counsel. Tonight before you, you have the second reading of ordinance 1447 on park rules and regulations. The only difference between the first reading and the second reading was, in addition to Section 8.18100, naming of parks, trails, and facilities, Section F. It states, "Parks, trails, and facilities shall not be assigned a name that by contemporary community standards is derogatory, offensive, distasteful, or in violation of generally accepted moral standards. Otherwise, the language presented before you is the same as you seen last time."
Great, okay. Whoops, great, okay, thank you, Mr. Crownheart. Counsel, I will open up for questions for staff or deliberations amongst ourselves for this one. Okay. Seems we've all learned our lesson about talking lately, because nobody wants to talk tonight.
That's the nature.
Okay, if there's no, if there is no discussion on this, Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1447, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, amending to amendments to Richfield Municipal Code, Chapter 8.18, Park Rules and Regulations.
Great, thank you. Okay, Counsel, if there is no more discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1447 as presented.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1447 as presented. Any further discussion, Counsel? Seeing none, Ms. Julie, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Favella?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Wells?
Yes.
Councilmember Burkle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chipman?
Yes.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you very much, Counsel. Flying right on through, we're going to go to our third item of business. This is the approval of the Roundabout Committee's recommendation on the Pioneer Street at Discovery Drive, that's 50th Place Roundabout, and for the staff report, we'll go to Mr. Chuck Green.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and guests. This is the, I believe, the third roundabout that the Roundabout Committee has taken on. This is the one at Pioneer Street, Discovery Drive, formerly known as 50th Place Roundabout. Julie, if you could go to the next slide, give you kind of a lay of the land, there's a bunch of dots, what do those dots mean? Well, those dots are either existing roundabouts or future roundabouts. The one that's smack dab in the middle with the blue box pointing to it is the roundabout we're talking about tonight, and that's the Discovery Drive and Pioneer Roundabout. Let's go to the next slide. So, I'm just going to jump right into the Roundabout Committee recommended concepts before you. They spent three meetings on this, and then after I briefly go through these concepts which you have, have seen and talked about in your briefings, I actually have the different bullet points of recommendations of design parameters from the Roundabout Committee that will help hopefully answer some questions that I know you have. So, the first of these renderings is, is one that has native vegetation in a variety of layers. And I want to back up a bit, the discussion about the native vegetation resulted from next door to this, to the northeast, you all approved a contract last meeting to have some wetland mitigation planting. So, that's both for this project and IQ Credit Union. The Roundabout Committee picked up on that and said, where can we kind of blend in with the native vegetation here as it relates to the vegetation that's going to be at the wetlands plantings? And so, that's the, kind of the theme that's, that's brought into the middle of the roundabout here. I also want to point out, if you've been out there in the last day, you'll see that the knee wall is in, so it shows where the roundabout's going to go. It's big, big wall, well, it's a big concrete thing. It will look shorter once we get it paved around, but that, that's inherent in these concepts is that knee wall, you don't see it in the rendering because they're, the architect was trying to give an idea of what's going to be put in the middle with this. So, in the middle, you'll see an art piece, I'll give you a little bit more description of the, where that came from in a little bit, but essentially, it's a metal flange with bird cutouts. So, those little pieces in the middle, it's hard to see, but those are bird cutouts, kind of looking like a sandhill crane, because we love sandhill cranes in this city. It doesn't have to be a sandhill crane, but the intent of the Roundabout Committee is that it's something related to what we find at the refuge, one of the larger birds. So, you have a negative space in the middle. What the negative space that creates that is the cutout of the birds that would be put on stakes, and then they would put, be put around the roundabout behind the knee wall. So, it's taking advantage of basically a metal flange with a bird on it, and then the negative space birds become distributed around. You can kind of see it, there's two of them on the outer edges of the roundabout, that's the, what's the negative space in, on a stake. So, this is one in the middle. The next one, Julie, is three distributed around. So, we have one larger one, three less larger ones spread around the outside of the roundabout. Again, they're, they're more of a flange, they're not this big block of metal, it's, these are flanges with, with cutouts. I want to go to the next slide and explain what this is all about. Unfortunately, the image got put in sideways, I didn't mean it for that, but I'm an engineer trying to do PowerPoint, and that's what happens. Essentially, this image is from Steigerwald National Wildlife Refuge, and if you want to turn the screen, maybe you can see what it is, but it's, it's what came about, one of the Roundabout Committee members went to Steigerwald, saw this, and thought, this would be a good art application in, in the middle of this roundabout. So, it is, it is kind of a flange, it is negative space that's cut out. They didn't do what the Roundabout Committee is recommending, which is to take that negative space and put them on stakes. The, the other points I want to bring up with this is that the Roundabout Committee recognized the renderings didn't really show it, but kind of a lesson from the first roundabout, this will be mounted, and so, what you see in that rendering is actually the part that's above the top of the, the knee wall, so you do see what's in the middle as it's mounted up to the top. The plantings, again, will be native vegetation, they're attractive to pollinators, that was pretty important to the, the committee, is, again, relationship to the wetlands plantings as well. The, by the way, I want to advertise that the first planting for those wetlands is April 13th, so it's Watershead Alliance is organizing that, I've already signed up, so hint. The, the art, as I mentioned, would be the flange pieces with the negative space, and then the bird punchouts being put around the roundabout. And then they thought was, it'd be nice if the artist, and this would be a separately procured call for artists, preferably local, and so, this would not be something that the contractor that's building Pioneer would, would commission, because they're building a road, they're not really known for building art, so we would separately commission that, and this could go in after we're done with the project and put into the middle. So, that's, that in a nutshell, that's it. One, one in the middle, three kind of around the outside. The reason for the three is because this is a, more of like a two-dimensional piece. As you're coming down, it would be oriented toward, if you're coming east-west on Pioneer, you'd see it head-on, or it might be angled a bit. If you're on the side street, maybe not as much. With three kind of around the outside, you would have, no matter which direction you're coming, come, you can come from the community building that is being planned to the north, or from the big business parks that are to the south on Discovery Drive, you'd still see one of these pieces head-on as you're coming into the middle of the roundabout. So, with that, that's what the Roundabout Committee is forwarding to you for your decision. They also forwarded a recommendation on the next roundabout, which I'll bring up after we've talked about this roundabout.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Green. Counsel, discussion on this roundabout, and we'll start at, we'll start at this way, and we'll.
Sure.
Yes.
So, I would imagine, just looking at this, that their costs are significantly different, because one feels semi-unfinished to me, and the other one feels like it has a little bit more girth.
So, it's a good question, and I know that it's, we're kind of comparing this to the art that was, is being put onto the I-5 overpass or on the railroad overpass. Those are a bunch of artistic sandhill cranes with colors put onto them. There's a lot of work going into those, it's about $100,000 for that total works, you know, the 68 birds that are going in. This is probably going to be less than that, because essentially, you're commissioning a metal flange with, with punchouts and, and fabricating a bird that goes on top.
Sure. I just think, it doesn't feel like, so in option two, it feels like these pieces need to be taller, almost, like it needs, it feels like it's not quite enough to me in both of them. I think we need to absolutely, like, fill this space. Option one feels like we're not done yet. I think those are such significant things that people drive around all the time, and I, if I understand correctly, a good function of a roundabout is to not really be able to see the other side, so that you're paying attention to the traffic that's coming your way. So, it seems like we need to do more here.
Okay, great, thank you, Counselor. Other comments or questions, Counselor Burkle?
With our history of the 56th Street Roundabout, what are our plans to keep vehicles from entering this roundabout, knocking all this wonderful artwork down?
So, that concrete monolith that you see out there now is the, the result of putting that into our design standards, that knee wall, it's going to be about 20 to 24 inches higher than the surrounding truck apron that's in the middle of the roadway. We don't have that at 56, we don't have that at 65th right now, we have boulders, and so, that's the difference. We did look at this, and there was some consideration for, will this stop somebody from going through the middle, and will this protect our maintenance workers who would be in there maintaining these every so often? And the answer is yes, we did, we did look at this rather significantly.
Thank you, I just was concerned, thank you, I was just concerned in that the last vehicle that entered 56th Street went completely over the top of our "Welcome to Ridgefield" sign and landed in the middle, so whatever we can do to keep them out, I'd really appreciate it.
Counselor Wells, any questions or comments on this one?
Yes, I got a comment. I agree with Counselor Hamilton. The second option, Chuck had said that, I understood him saying we only had one option, the second option was for an additional roundabout down the road, but I do the second option was for an additional roundabout down the road, but I do like option two better, and I do think that at least the center one needs to be higher, so I think we need to reconsider this rather than adopting it this evening.
So, Counsel, just one caveat to this, just as a reminder, we're bringing this to you right now because it is incredibly timely associated with the design of this roundabout to integrate into the Pioneer Street widening project. So, pushing this back could be problematic for the purposes of integrating into the design to actually get this thing done and paid for as part of the project. So, I just want to put that caution out there to you. We talked about that in briefings, that it is timely because we want to do that associated with Pioneer Street widening.
So, I guess what Mr. Stewart's saying is if you want to make that change, then we'd have to deliberate and figure that out tonight and present that in the package motion.
That would be staff's preference.
Yeah.
Right. I would just say...
But I would agree with you. No, I, okay, you're saying put it off.
Right. I understand we're under a time constraint, but let's get staff on it and get it taken care of quick so we can get it forward. We don't have to have the statues in it, you've got to have punch lists after the 22nd of April that things will be have to finish up down the road. Everything will not be done by the 22nd of April.
Well, the, a couple of things here, is, one is the plantings, this roundabout will unlikely be ready for the native plantings this spring, which puts them into the fall planting season, just because there's still a lot of work to do. We do have irrigation coming in, we do have power. What we do probably need is, we'll need to, if these art pieces, piece or pieces, we'll need a pedestal or some type of foundation to put on, whether, you know, it's one or three, we need to know that now so we can at least design and build the concrete pedestal that goes in, knowing that once, once they're done and we're commissioning what the art, the artist and the art, final art, that can happen at a later time, as long as we have the pedestal to put the art on.
You're the engineer.
At least for the next 14 weeks, three days and six hours.
Okay, we'll move on with questions or comments. Mayor Potem, we'll go to you next.
So, okay, I have a couple of things. So, I'm fine with option two.
Are you, turn your, sorry.
I'm liking option two, and I think that, it's kind of hard to tell here how tall they are, but with the plantings and whatever, it might be significant enough. I think one of the things we do as a council is we have to be careful, because we put these committees in place to bring things to us, and then when we reject them, I just don't think that sends a very good message to the community that we put committees in place and then we don't do what they ask us to do. But if you really don't like either of these, I can understand it, but I'm perfectly fine with option two. I think it's, I think it looks good, and I think it can, you know, serve it well, so that's my opinion.
So, you like, you like option two as presented? Okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor Potem, and we'll go to Counsel. Well, we're going to go, I'll get all the other questions first, and we'll come back to you. Counselor Favella, we'll go to you next.
Yeah, thank you. I am going to go disagree with everyone. I prefer option one, I think it's more cost-effective, but I also would like to see more shrubs, because it's giving very plain in the middle. Option two, I am fixated in my head that it is going to be an issue with the sun setting and sun rising and three objects, like, the sunlight is going to shine through and blind me when I'm driving, and I'm, I just, I don't want to guess if that will happen or not, so I would like to err on the side of caution and just not do that and go with option one. Maybe we can raise the birds up a little bit higher, a little, but add some more shrubs in there, and let's call it good.
I do want to point out, the committee did talk about the shininess of this, and so, what you see is kind of a matte finish, so it's not shiny, it's on purpose because of that concern about sun shining off of these into people's eyes. And the, there's actually a planting plan, I didn't present this because it's the concept, but the roundabout committee, as a member of the garden club who's a native plant expert, kind of a subject matter expert, there is a planting plan that comes with this, that she would work with the landscape architect for our project to make sure that it does have three levels of plants that are varying levels, so it actually will be taller than what it appears in this rendering.
Okay, great. Counselor Davis, any questions or comments from your end?
Yeah, I guess I kind of echo a lot of the sentiments out there. I see elements I like for both of them. I love on option one, how, you know, the cutouts are used and posted, and it creates a couple of different elevations. My first thought when I'd seen it earlier was just the flat, the fact that their flanges seem just, for lack of a better way of putting it, ironically, like a little flat, and my first thought was, it would be cooler if it was like cylinders. And then I started thinking, maybe those cutouts wouldn't really be realized well enough because of whatever angle. I just felt like, if you're driving up and it's like flat metal, like, what am I looking at? And it didn't seem as full, I just thought it would be more dynamic if they were metal cylinders with cutouts, as opposed to a flat sheet of metal, but I also don't want it to be super distracting. So, I guess I'm kind of conflicted with all of them. I'm glad you talked about the height, because that was the second thing I saw, was the 65th, 56th, and then on Royal by the Rosar's gas station, and then, what, 35th? Those are all pretty low. I mean, and I realize, not every traffic circle we put in can be, you know, Royal and Pioneer, but from a safety perspective, from a presentation perspective, from a, you know, you're not seeing all the way through perspective, I would like us to adopt some design standards that require them to be taller and fuller. So, I'm just sort of, I don't know, I'm very kind of conflicted. As I said, I like elements of both of them. I'm definitely more of a fan of, you got, if we're going to go with option one, you got to fill that out, but I don't know, I like that number two just seems more full in general.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm kind of, I don't know, I'm torn.
Yeah, okay, I'm right there with you. Looking at the two differences between the options, like, option two does look more full, but here's the thing, I really have a lot of faith in Heather Gordon and like her, you know, like, she sent us a letter earlier this week, and very, very, very detailed, and I appreciate that, because she's, you know, she's very into, so I guess I say all of that, I say, I trust the committee's recommendation on either one of these, that it's going to look good, that they've considered those things. Just a couple of questions for staff from me. Mr. Green, was there given, was there any consideration given to illumination on this, for this at all?
There was, they wanted to keep this more natural because of the wetland and the planting, kind of the natural area next to it, and not kind of be flashy, as far as that's concerned, so there wasn't that much of a discussion of lighting, it was more on art that fit the context of the surrounding environment.
Okay. How often do they discuss these? Like, is this over a couple of meetings, or they just go through this in one meeting, and in between, they're doing their homework? Or, like, how many touches does the committee get on this?
Well, this one had three, but we also had, we had a little bit of a blip, because we lost two of the committee members after they first started talking about this. They had one meeting that we were waiting for the appointment of the two new ones, and then the third meeting is when we had the two new ones, we had the full committee to talk about these. And then, actually, the fourth meeting, two of the members were absent, so it was, it was kind of back and forth, but we did have, they did have a lot of input. One of our committee members, newer committee members, is more looking for efficiencies in the design, and so, where you see, you don't see these big monolith arts, this is something that fits more functional, and that's what passed her test when this was being reviewed and discussed.
Okay. Great. And then, as far as costs, is there any significant cost difference between the two concepts? And to piggyback to that question is, does the estimated cost for this fit within our budget for this project?
Yeah, so, the cost of option two would be a little bit higher. Obviously, the metal, there's a little bit more metal in option two. Part of the art is also, it's time that the artist spends to actually make the art and do the cutting out and fabrication. The project itself is in really good financial shape, we're actually doing a midterm review of the financials after we're finished with the closure of Pioneer to get an idea of where we are, but based on when we came to you a couple of months ago, the planting of vegetation that's in the middle is already part of the bid, so that's, we had a kind of a placeholder planting or landscape plan just to get the bid in, so it's really, the difference is the art in the project, so I'm guessing, just looking at this, between $50,000 and $100,000 for the art. The project has $2 million that was awarded by you for contingencies and incentives, we've used about $800,000 of that, and it's probably about as much as we're going to be using of that, so we still have $1.2 million in contingencies that could easily fund this art.
Okay. Great. I'll go back down to Counselor Hamilton.
Thank you. I don't, I think it's important to get feedback on these kind of things. I think Katie, or Counselor Favella's point was very good, I hadn't thought about the sun element and the driving factor, like, I was like, oh, yeah, that, I mean, I don't know what that looks like, but even if they're not shiny, having opportunities to get like sun peaks, I think one does make more sense, but we just have to add more, it needs to look fuller, yeah, it just, it just feels like that middle section needs more. So, I'm fine with one, as long as we know that we're going to make that, the actual plants, super full and plush and lush and all the pretty things.
Great, okay. And Counselor Birkel?
Just a quick question, how tall are we talking, the art pieces?
The, it's, it hits a matter of perspective, and it's really, we would, they wanted to leave that up to the artist. The shrubs themselves is, again, there's three layers, there's ground cover, there's medium, and there's actually small trees that are getting up to eight to 10 feet tall. These would, the art pieces are expected to be at least five feet taller than the tallest tree, so, and then, the reason you see cutouts is because, obviously, at some point, you want to see the art, all of the art, and you don't want a bunch of trees kind of blocking that bottom part of the art, so that's why you see a notch in there. But, again, it's, you're probably talking at most a total of 15 to 16 feet tall art.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments, Counsel? My only other thing, all I add to that is, I do like having the tallest piece of art in the middle, it feels more balanced to kind of do like the peak and then kind of goes out from there, but I am more partial to option two. But also, in the Mayor Potem's comment, I think that that's a very, that's a very valid comment to say that we have these commissions and these committees, and we ask them to do work, and I don't like going back and forth with our eraser and undoing their work. Yeah. Okay. So, Counsel, looking to you for what we want to do next here. Yeah, I would entertain a motion or an action of some kind? So, well, okay, so...
You can make a motion.
Oh, you're going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Let's just see what...
Okay, I move that we take option one, delete the bottom bird, and raise the height a little higher, and go for that.
So, the, okay.
Option one, so we can have a little more plantings around the bottom of it. I'm discussing it, so we'll just go with my motion, see if there's a second, then we can discuss after that.
So, the motion is to go with option one, but delete the two birds on the side?
Yeah.
The bottom one?
So that you can put more plants there.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, okay, yes.
If you look close...
Cut out of the bird there, okay.
If you look close at the base, you'll see that pedestal I was talking about, it's just a little in this, that can be modified if you want to raise this up, so that's...
Gotcha. Okay, is there, it's been moved, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded in Council discussion.
Okay, as Mr. Maker of the motion, if we eliminate that lower bird and fill in with a little more shrubbery around it, and as the city engineer said, if we raise the pedestal a little higher, and it would be hidden by shrubbery, and that would elevate the monument a little higher, so that's my recommendation.
Okay. Other thoughts? Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I mean, I would just add on to that, I guess, once we get like a planning plan to know what it actually is, I think, I would like to see the height of that pedestal to be just a little short of the anticipated top of those shrubs, so it's, you know, the pedestal's hidden, but we're able to see a lot of, you know, if that art is going to cost $100,000 bucks, I want to see it.
Natural vegetation, it can be an older tree.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just be able to work with the planning plan before we, before we pour the pedestal, so.
Okay. Other, other comments, Counsel? Okay, Counselor Birkel agrees. Anybody else? Okay. All right, it has been moved and seconded to go with option one, with the caveat that we delete the bottom bird, raise the pedestal, and add more shrubbery, make it more full through there. Did I get that right? Okay. Okay. All right, all those in favor, say, a what?
Do we need to read it? No?
No, it's been moved and seconded. Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Counsel.
So, before you leave this, one, what you've just done is you're giving direction to staff, because we'll now work with the design team to design this and then get this built.
Correct.
What I don't, didn't quite get from your motion is, do you want to see, I thought I heard somebody about, interested in wanting to see the planting plan out of this, is that, was that part of?
The main part of the motion, we didn't want to see, I didn't want to see the planting plan.
So, you just kind of trust the engineer on the planting plan? Yeah, we'll bring you back of the final rendering and design of this.
Sounds great.
And I realize that in that we didn't give you our recommendation for the next roundabout, but I don't think we have to do that in action, do we? Or, just...
So, the next, the roundabout committee then had a second part to this, and they're recommending the Royal at South Wells Drive be the next roundabout that they look at.
Ye, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we're good. Yeah, okay.
Which is good, because we're running out of roundabouts to look at, so...
We can fix that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have a couple of public hearings to go to now. The first one is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1448, amendments to the Ridgefield Municipal Code 10.12, it's the on-street parking provisions on sections of Taverner Drive and South Sispus Way. Mr. Green, we'll go back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, and guests. This is a proposal generated from some discussions with the Taverner Ridge Homeowners Association over the last six months or so, and back in 2021, my predecessor went and walked the neighborhood with the homeowner representative or the developer at that time, looking at some of the wider streets, and determined in discussions with the Clark Collins Fair Rescue, that the wider streets could have parking on both sides. Back at the time, the standards had a no parking zone on one side of the street, even if the street was 32 feet wide. We've since modified our standards to say, when streets are that wide or wider, they can have a parking on both sides if they're less than 32 feet, like 28 feet, which is If they're less than 32 feet, like 28 feet, which is our local street standard, there's no parking on one side. So that's kind of the nexus here. So back in 2021, the no parking signs were removed throughout much of Taverner Ridge as part of that discussion. Since then, the homeowners association, some representatives came and discussed with us there's some issues. And so I want to go through those issues that generated this proposal. And then, because it's a, it's a modification to code, which is where our parking is, lies on-street parking, it becomes an ordinance. So we get back to that discussion about ordinances versus resolutions. I'm not going to go any further into that, as we've already discussed that ad nauseam. However, this is an ordinance, and it requires a public hearing. So why don't we go to the presentation? I'll give you the, what that background looks like. All right, I guess I'm in the presentation. All right, okay. So the, there's two streets that are the subject of this request. One is South Cispus Way between Taverner Drive and Severe. This is where the neighborhood is seeing parking on one side of the street. Basically, there's no parking on one side, there's parking allowed on the other side. The parking that's allowed is blocking sight distance for one of the intersections where most of the vehicles are trying to turn out and left onto Cispus Way. There's also vehicles that have been parking in front of community mailboxes along that street. And then, as you go further down, there's a, some vehicles that, because of the rise and fall in the street, actually blocks sight distance of a stop sign. So I'm gonna go to that presentation now, start showing you the, the issue with, I think I started with Cispus Way. Let me go to that next. Go to the, there we go. So here's, here's the issues in a kind of a photographic tour. As you can see on the first photo, trying to get out from Metal Arc Loop or Metal Arc Drive, trying to turn left, you see vehicles that are parked there. They actually are parked there quite often in the site visits that we've made, that I've made, and actually with the representatives of homeowners association as well. That's one of the issues. If you look at the photo on the right, you'll see cars parked right next to the community mailboxes. It makes it difficult for mail trucks to get in and service those mailboxes. And again, these are photos are taken on a weekend. And so I wanted to look at what the situation is during the day or at times at night. Why don't we go to the next? Let's see, and this is, the last one is on the left side image. What you'll see is that's where the Cispus Way is kind of a little bit of a rise, then it falls down toward Taverner Drive. As you can see, the stop sign is somewhat obstructed. Tree, we can take care of, but if you look at, if there are taller vehicles parked in, on that instead of smaller vehicles, that actually would block the sight distance of that stop sign, and you wouldn't see it until you're right at the intersection. The, so that's Cispus Way. Taverner Drive, the issue is, along a sharp curve around a stormwater pond, there's vehicles allowed to park on both sides. Again, because the no parking signs were removed, the sharpness of that curve, and when you get cars parked on both sides of the street around that curve, it's inhibiting school buses getting through, because that's a, that's a tight maneuver. There's also concern it's gonna, it would block emergency vehicles like fire trucks from getting through. And so that's the, the nexus of the, the issue on Taverner Drive. Now, I went and looked at the situation here. I also looked at a little further toward where the, where the photographer, me, was standing is there's a stormwater pond, and there's a maintenance access that comes out of that pond. If vehicles are parked on the left side of that image, they block sight distance for vehicles trying to, maintenance vehicles trying to get out of there. Right next to that, there's a crosswalk, or there's, there's actually wheelchair ramps and an unmarked crosswalk, but those cars also would block sight distance of pedestrians trying to use that, that crosswalk. Why don't we back up to one more slide? So, in looking at the situation, this, this became a variety of studies, but one is, what's the impact on the neighbors adjacent to where these areas being looked at? And then, what's the, what's the overall impact or benefit of, of these changes? Went out and distributed 32 door hangers with information, here's the proposal, here's the issues, contact me if you have concerns about this. We knocked on doors, I went with two representatives of the homeowners association. One person that we did answer was in favor of this because of the, the issues. Another was concerned about losing parking directly in front of their house on the other side of the street. When we discussed it further, they would still have plenty of parking on the other side of the street. It would just be about 100 feet down the street, on the other side of the street. On their side of the street, there's, there's plenty of parking that would still be available. There's no effect to that. The, let's see, why don't we go back to the, the photos? And then one more, one more. I think that, okay, here's a map of, of the proposed changes. So what you see on here is essentially on Cispus Way, the proposal is to flip the parking, no parking. The no parking would be on, what was the, be the south side, going from the south side to the north side of Cispus Way. So it would remove the sight distance obstructions, it would remove the possibility of vehicles parking in front of the community mailbox. The parking would just, the parking allowed would be on the other side of the street. It's pretty much a wash between the north and south sides of the street there. Along Taverner Drive, there's about 280 feet of, around that curve of where the parking would be removed. Again, looking at parking utilization along there, looking at, having talked with a couple of the neighbors, the impact is, is minimal as far as, would there still be parking available? Yes, there is still parking available. In a couple instances, it'd just be a little further down the street before you get into the curve. But the big benefit here is, again, having talked with the school, the school bus company, KDOARL, they very much would benefit by not having that sharp curve with vehicles parked on both sides, inhibiting their, their way to get school buses through, and they do go through this neighborhood. And as well as Clark Collins Fire Rescue, again, this is more looking at the emergency vehicle response, which isn't as often as a school bus, but still the larger fire trucks that we heard Chief Nor talking about earlier tonight would have a better way to get through without having to navigate through cars parked on both sides. So with that, this, this is the, ends my presentation. We are requesting counsel hold a public hearing. If, again, depending on a public comment on this, we would be amenable to waiving second reading if counsel so desires.
Great, okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Okay, so counsel, what I'd like to do now is, if you have a specific questions for staff, let's ask questions right now, and then we'll go to the public hearing, and then we'll come back and do our deliberations. We'll, if you want to discuss and deliberate after that, we'll do that after we close the public hearing. Sound good? Okay, so with that in mind, questions for staff? Anybody? Counselor Burkle?
Clarification for myself. Cispus Way, we would be simply relocating no parking from one side to the other?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Great, other questions? Is, so that, that area where we see right now, where are the mailbox? Oh, never mind, it says right there. Okay, they are on the side where you put no parking. Okay. Good. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm gonna now open the public hearing. If you signed up for this city, with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called and you will receive permission to mute or unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you did not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. The city clerk will grant you permission to speak. When speaking, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes, and there'll be no back and forth or discussion between the council. And again, just, this is public comment for this, this public hearing only. So this public hearing is now open. Is there anybody wishing to give public comment? All right.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Rob Akeley. I live at 1575 South 15th Way, and I'm a resident of Taverner Ridge for the last 10 years. And I, I have eight copies, one for the clerk and one for each counsel and one counselor. I have a concern with the proposed parking area on South Cispus Way. Page 116 of your packet, that was that last picture that Chuck showed up on the wall, on the board. Anyways, page 116 of the packet, and the photo I show, shows some approximate measurements of the short section of South Cispus Way leading up to Severe Road. The two commercial trucks shown in this photo have been parking daily in this location for well over a year. Those two trucks are approximately 20 to 21 feet long. The green stripe that shows on page 116 of the agenda packet is about 56 feet long. Point being, that little section of road is very short. I'm pretty sure once no parking is implemented on the north side of the street and then allowed on the south side of the street, that those commercial business trucks will then park there. These trucks have parked on the south, oh, these trucks, if parked on the south side of the street, will hinder seeing the stop sign, just like Chuck Green mentioned that's occurring on the end of Cispus Way. It'll also impair other, impair other sight line views because of their size and height. Those trucks also got notice hangers put on them a couple months ago when the project was walked, the city notice. Okay, my ask is, I would like you to consider having no parking on both sides of that short section of street that leads to Severe Road and the new Hillhurst Commercial Center, which will also increase traffic quite a bit when it's complete with all the businesses and the condominiums that are going in there. I thank you for your time tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Akeley. Anybody else wishing to give public comment? Anybody else in the room? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online.
Okay, seeing none. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, returning to you for consideration of what's to be forced tonight. We'll start with Counselor Hamilton, we'll go down the line again.
Thank you. So in full transparency, my house is featured in this, this is my neighborhood. So I would agree with everything that was just said. I think if I'm looking at this proposal, agreed to those bottom two sections to have no parking there. Those cars have been there, they're not moving, and it does change visibility. Where I worry, so the, the parking along here, that is currently where the mailboxes are.
Could I stop you for just a sec? Ms. Julie, could you put that last, yeah, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So the parking, the people that are parking, where there is currently allowed park.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Oh, just making sure.
So where people are, where they're currently parking is all the people that live in this neighborhood, this section. Those are the houses that are closer, smaller lot sizes, smaller garages, smaller driveways. So I think the people in that particular section will feel upset for that getting moved one side of the street to the other. I think that will affect those people directly. I agree that there doesn't, the, the parking along the, the river area there, I, I've been looking at this since I drive it every day, and there are still parking options in front of all these people's houses. Do I think it's probably easier to pull on that side, and if you don't know how to parallel park? Probably. But I, I agree that, I mean, I have a daughter that isn't taking the school bus, and I would rather have that be as safe as possible, if that's been an, an issue that's been expressed by them.
Counselor Hamilton, you, if you could please for us, just because we can't see what you were pointing, do you have the, the road names or something that, we just want to make sure that we're capturing what the conversation is?
Yes, sorry about that. Okay, so the, the proposed no parking, I would want in the red and the green as you enter on Cispus. Cispus, yes. I think we should leave the parking where it is, despite the mailbox situation that's currently where you're allowed to park on that same road.
Between Metal Arc Loop and?
Taverner.
Okay.
And then on Taverner, I agree with the proposed no parking on the side of the water.
Thank you, counselor.
Okay, Counselor Burkle?
Thank you. I too would be in favor of putting no parking on the, what I would assume would be the south side of Cispus for that short distance that would block the stop sign.
Just on that one spot, that one block right there?
Yeah, that, that one short block.
I'm trying to point.
No parking there, as well, no parking on the north side as we are proposing.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
But leave parking on the rest of Cispus where it's green?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Wells?
I have one question. I think I've heard.
Microphone, please.
I have one question. I thought I've heard in the past that Taverner didn't allow any commercial vehicles in their development of parking overnight or parking period. Is anybody, huh? Okay, somebody else? I, I thought that was one of the HOA rules, and I see there are two in this picture. So I guess I'm questioning Mr. Ackley. That, I'm not asking, I can't answer.
No, I'm saying, you have three members up there that actually know the HOACC and ours because they live in there. So.
So, Mayor Pro Tem, you're a Taverner Ridge resident.
That's true.
You think that's true? Okay.
I mean, obviously, they're sitting there parked, as Mr. Akeley says, but they are not supposed to be. Is that correct?
It's not enforced.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Nothing is enforced. It's a complaint.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no parking costs.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
That was actually my question as well, because I do know a lot of the CCNRs in the neighborhoods don't allow commercial vehicle parking. So I was wondering if these people were parking here because it wasn't in like an HOA designated area and they still were bringing their vehicles home? And if that was the case, if we were to take this away, is there parking within close proximity to their home so that they can still continue to bring their work vehicle home without the fear of somebody complaining that they can't now bring their vehicle home because of a HOA standard?
My understanding was that along the houses, along Taverner Drive right there, that where you enter in that, that back way, they have, they have driveways in the back, right?
Yes.
Very short ones. So I'm guessing probably the reason why it parked in the street is because those commercial vehicles would not fit the length of the driveway?
Right.
Okay.
And, and again, I do want to repeat what Mr. Akeley said, is when we went out and distributed those flyers, they were put on the windshields of those two vehicles. I have not heard from them.
Okay.
So I, I do not know where, where they live.
Sounds like they've had opportunity. Okay, great. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I guess as far as like the HOA, whether they're enforcing, not enforcing, like, in my opinion, shouldn't necessarily drive like city or council action.
Right.
But I believe that just on the merits of the length of that strip and the visibility to the stop sign, you know, the, the, the people that drive those commercial vehicles could move out next weekend, and I still think it would be good policy because somebody else might decide to park their personal, you know, one of the Sprinter Adventure vans or something, something like that. I just think that regardless of the type of vehicle, it, it makes sense to have some restrictions on parking on both sides of the street, just considering the nature of it. And so, you know, whether or not Taverner allows it, and whether they're not enforcing it, I, I don't think that's like our thing to dive into. But I, I think that the decision is still good policy in my book.
I'd agree with that. Thank you for bringing it back to that. I think that's a, that's a valid point to say that our job is look at what makes good policy, not necessarily what. not necessarily what, what works for the HOA or, you know, right there. So, something worth considering. I do like what Mr. Burkle, you proposed there too, and I agree with Mr. Akeley that there are, that that, you know, if you put no parking on that north side of Cispus right there, that last block, then they'll park on the other side and that's going to obstruct the stop sign. I don't think that's, that would be reflective of good policy. So, I think that we should probably just make that, no parking for that part of the block on both sides?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions or comments, Counsel? There is an option to wait a second on this if you, if you so wished. Otherwise, this is first reading only.
And Mayor, if I might add on that, if there are changes to what you see before you on this, because there is interest within the community associated with what you end up deciding, this is certainly appropriate for you to give us direction as staff as to what you would like to bring back over that two weeks, and then we can make sure that we reconnect with the HOA and affected parties on whatever those changes are that you might recommend.
Great, okay. I think that's probably appropriate, Counsel. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I think getting public feedback is important in this part of the process. So, I, you mentioned that option at the beginning, and I think that's important.
Yeah, we did, they did do outreach through like the door hangers and window tags. Are you saying you would like more public feedback based on what was discussed tonight?
Yeah, that doesn't seem like that was very effective, and not for lack of trying or not a good idea. I think that, I've lived there and I didn't, I don't remember getting a door hanger. So, I think there could be another layer if we want to dip into this. If we don't, and it's not our thing, then I understand that too.
Okay, so that's one piece of feedback for staff. Is there anybody who agrees or disagrees with that? Say that again?
Mr. Mayor?
I agree with that.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? I would ask if staff could confirm what the HOA regulations are, just for good measure, to know that, what the rule is and that HOA about parking commercial vehicles on the street?
To my understanding, it's not allowed, but it's not forced, like...
Right, yes.
So, I have personally seen those cars parked out there for a year straight, so...
Okay. Anybody else before we move on? Counselor Burkle?
Whose responsibility would it be to enforce no parking in that HOA?
Well, no parking in the HOA, I mean, the city, yes, right? But, yeah...
So, on-street parking, if there is no, if there are no parking signs that are city no parking signs and people are parking where no parking is allowed, then that is a city enforcement function. It is generally a complaint-driven function that occurs through either Ridgefield Police Department or the code enforcement officer for the City of Ridgefield.
Right, so, same with code enforcement, like we're, they're not patrolling neighborhoods, but if there is a complaint, that they will respond to it?
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
If we put signs up.
Yep.
So, Mayor and Counsel, before you leave this, I'm just going to pick at it just a little bit. We will, we can certainly get information more about the HOA rules, regulations, street map, but we also want to make sure that the map of city, back to Counselor Davis's comment, the map of no parking and parking, which is really the city's function in this, that we are meeting your, your needs on that. So, what we have heard so far is to bring back a map with the short section between Sevier and Meadowlark Loop, having no parking on both sides to prevent site distance issues associated with that, okay? Then the question that I think we don't have clarity yet on the longer section between the two Meadowlark Loop connections, is your desire to see a map that has the parking on one side and no parking on the other, which is what it has been, but flipping it, or parking on both sides, which is what I thought I heard from Counselor Hamilton, but maybe I misheard that?
Okay, can you clarify that, Counselor?
You probably didn't mishear it, I probably just said it in a strange way. I think that I don't, I'm not in favor of flipping the sides of the street between Meadowlark and Taverner. I think that should stay as it is, and we should eliminate the no parking in the shorter section from Sevier to...
Cispus.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if we could get some clarity on that from Counsel as far as kind of what's your druthers and what you would like us to bring back with having the parking on the south side or the north side between Meadowlark Loops?
Okay, hold on. If we're going to take parking away from this front small section, why wouldn't we do it on the back section? Because I kind of feel like people are upset about the commercial vehicles, so we'll take it away, but if we're doing it out of functionality, then wouldn't it be both small sections since it's the same?
Are you referring to the short section before you get to Taverner Drive where that stops?
I can't, yes, yes.
We can do that. There's a couple of things I want to point out here. If you remember last time at the downtown parking plan, we're proposing to come back to you with a no parking in front of the mailbox ordinance?
Yeah.
Right.
Which could apply in this case in the future, if that's, the desire is not to flip this. But we could come back and hold on that with that ordinance, which would then hopefully take care of that problem in front of that. And we could then remove parking for about two vehicle lengths as you approach Taverner. That would also affect that, improve the site distance of that stop sign. We could also put in a stop bar at that, so on the street, that white, the big white bar thing. We could do that too, to accentuate that there's a stop sign there.
So, you're saying on the side of the street, the, it looks like the north side of Cispus where we have all and no parking, about two vehicle lengths before you get to Taverner Drive, you would say we can put, is that what you're talking about?
We could make, we could make that no parking for about two vehicle lengths, about 60, 50 to 60 feet there, because we don't have that right now.
On the south side where it's...
On the north, on the north side. And so, what we'd have under this discussion, we would have no parking on both sides between Meadowlark Loop and Sevier, and then no parking on the north side for about 50 to 60 feet as you approach Taverner Drive. But you'd leave the rest of the parking as is. And then we would also return to you, hopefully in, before June 30th, with a no parking in front of the mailbox ordinance that would actually be applied citywide.
Counselor Burkle?
Just a question on that short, on Cispus. If we allow parking on both the south and the north side, does that leave adequate space for emergency vehicles to get through?
I don't believe Cispus Way is wide enough for parking on both sides.
Okay.
No.
Also, a question on Taverner. Eliminating parking on the park side, does that improve ability of emergency vehicles to get through on Taverner?
Yes, that red area, yes, definitely.
So, that should, that, we will leave that as no parking?
It's not, it's, it's parking now, the proposal is to make it no parking.
No parking.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, staff, are we clear? Do you have clarity or do you need more clarity?
Clear as mud.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you, okay, so, you know, we make decisions, things are evolving. I think I have a place in my heart to leave that parking on that side, because I live there and I know the people that will be affected. Not a huge inconvenience, but one that exists. But I'm also a practical person, and I think that if we're eventually going to put a no in front of the mailbox situation, and then we're going to take part of the street away anyways, that's kind of, it's ineffective. It like, it should probably switch to the other side despite me really not thinking that I was going to say that today. But, hearing all the data, it makes more sense.
Okay. Counsel, any thoughts on that? Yeah, I want to make sure you, you all have what you need to come back to it.
I think, so, it just depends on, like, I'm trying to read the room a little bit with Counsel. So, if what I am hearing is there's clarity around the small section on the east there as it connects with Sevier, that there would be no parking on either side in that short section of Cispus?
Correct.
Okay. Then the rest of it, there's been some discussion and dialogue around which side you would have and why, and the original proposal before you was simply to take the north side parking and move it to the south side so that there would not be any interference with the mailbox and that you would not have site distance issues at the stop sign. That was the original proposal. There's been a lot of conversation about it. I'm hearing it kind of roll back to that proposal for those sections. Is that where you would like us to bring it back to you and get feedback?
Okay, on my left side, I'm getting a lot of nods, on my right side, I'm getting more pondering, so, Counsel, what do you, what do you think?
I mean...
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I would clarify it. If we were going to do parking only on one side, which that's what we're going to do, but if it's going to be on that south side, to really have it be just on the long block, the Meadowlark Loop to...
The two short blocks right there.
Yeah, excluding the two short blocks. So, only parking on the one long block on the south side, because I agree that both sides, if we're talking on that east side at the corner of Sevier, whether it's commercial vehicles or any other large vehicle, it's going to impair site distance. And I think about somebody that, you know, like Counselor Favella brought up, you move to the west, and if somebody's at Meadowlark and wanting to turn left, and all of a sudden somebody from Taverner is coming up and they turn right, it's just too short of a block if somebody's parked on the road there to see. I think that that could be a safety issue as well. And so, to me, it's almost a process of elimination where it makes it so that it's only allowing parking on that south side and the long block, and then the question is, is that enough? And I would yield to the people that live in the neighborhood to say whether that's a solution that actually pencils or not.
I think it's important to keep in mind too that the entry point for the more east, smaller blocks is far busier than the one that's inside. It's, that's a, that's an entry point to the neighborhood versus a very small pocket...
You're saying like when you turn on the Meadowlark, is that what you're saying?
When you turn onto Cispus, and, so, yeah, those front two, north and south, off of Sevier.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure.
That entry point, I mean, the traffic there versus the traffic further in is a drastic difference.
So, Mayor, may I just intervene for a second?
Please.
So, if it is the will of the council, we could have the engineer do a site distance evaluation on that shorter section to determine whether it would make sense or be necessary to remove the parking on the south side in that short section on the west, or whether site distance evaluation shows that it's okay to have that on there. Because if that is kind of, the determination would be, it might be an issue to site distance. If you allow us to, we'll have the engineer take a look at that and come back to us with some information about like, is that an issue that we need to do or not? And we'll bring that to you at the next meeting.
I personally like that.
Counsel, I suggest that's probably a good action plan?
Yes.
Yes.
And then...
And I think we also need to keep in mind that these people live on alleys back here, and they have a very tiny little garage and pad in the back. And so, if they have two cars, I mean, you can't park in the alley. I mean, this is, this is the most limited parking I've seen in Ridgefield, and so, they park out in front of the house. I mean, I, we can't take away all their parking. I mean, they're going to park there anyway.
And I agree with that, and maybe I have too much of a heart in this, but I go back to the HOA and the commercial vehicle. I know so many families that struggle trying to find a home when they work and have a commercial vehicle and HOA says you can't park here, and then they find ways to make it work where they can live in their home and still bring their work vehicle home. And then, I'm saying, oh, just kidding, we're not going to do that, find something else, and then we completely, you know, have detrimental effects to there. So, that's where I'm at. I know we have to deal with policy, but I also am a human with a heart, and that's a reality, so, that's where I'm at.
Great, thank you, thank you, Counsel. So, my last request for staff on this is when you bring it back to us, could we, could you bring it back with maybe better labels on the map so when we have this discussion, we have better reference? I'm seeing everyone point at their screens or their handouts, and, and I know that nobody else can see that, so, I think that's adding to the confusion, but does it sound like you got the feedback you need otherwise? Okay.
Yes, and then, we'll also make sure, just to the last comment, we'll make sure we bring back linear feet of parking that's available, because certainly the attempt of staff was not to get rid of a bunch of parking opportunities for people who live there. So, we will bring back, like, what is the actual impact to linear feet of parking?
Okay, great, okay, great. Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1448, ordinance of the City of Ridgefield, Washington, modifying on-street parking regulation for certain section of Taverner Drive and South Cispus Way.
Great, thank you. And once again, this is first reading only. Moving on, we have a second public hearing tonight that we need to get through. It's a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1449. This is the Legacy Trails 3 RMUO expansion. Ms. Luss, we'll go to you for the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Good evening to members of the public. This proposal before you this evening is for an expansion of a mixed-use overlay. Zoning overlays, expansions or reductions thereof is a zone change, as such, it's subject to a Type 4 Legislative Land Use Review. That includes public hearings before both Planning Commission and Council, and then final action by Council. As such, we're here for Council's first touch as well as a public hearing on this proposal. No action is requested this evening. So, the subject property is on the east side of South Royal Road. It is immediately south of the Legacy Trails apartment complex and Legacy Trails 2 commercial buildings, which are currently under construction. The properties to the east are employment zone properties being developed as a PAC Trust, line industrial. To the south is a currently undeveloped parcel zone for medium-density residential. To the west, you have the easternmost extent of the Donut Hole or G Creek Plateau subarea, that's a low-density residential. And then to the northwest is basically the southern part of Pioneer Village, which is another project that was developed under the mixed-use overlay, including Pioneer Village Commercial and the Acero Apartments. So, the proposal shown on the next slide, please, is to expand the mixed-use overlay, which currently exists in a small portion of the site along South Royal Road, to expand that farther to the east. So, the base zoning of the parcel is currently split. The western, roughly two-thirds, the base zoning is medium-density residential. The eastern third is employment, and the zoning boundary there follows a natural boundary. There is a wetland, which is shown on these maps along with its buffers. So, the proposal is to take that little over three-acre portion that currently has the mixed-use overlay and pull that mixed-use overlay over the rest of the residential medium-density base zone up to that split at the wetland. The proposal does not have any impact bearing on the eastern employment zone portion of the site, which is really more associated with the properties to the east. All right. So, the proposal this evening is a zone change request only. This is not a development proposal under review. However, as we've done before with this type of proposal, the applicant has introduced a concept plan for the site that shows how a mix of uses could be developed under this overlay, and that's on the screen before you. As you can see, this would be sort of an extension of the mixed residential and commercial development immediately to the north. So, there would be a number of residential apartment buildings, a commercial building in the northwest along Royal Road, and then open space to the east where that wetland and its buffers exist. And that, that open space would serve, haven't run the numbers on this, because again, that's not a development proposal, but that open space would serve to meet the requirement for open space provision, which does exist in the RMUO zoning. All right, so, the approval criteria for a zone change on the screen before you, the first one is the most substantive. The following ones are pretty much administrative. But the first one is that amendments to zoning district maps or tasks must be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. The applicant has provided a response to this criterion, showing how the proposed mixed-use overlay expansion would serve to address a number of land use policies in the adopted 2016 to 2035 comprehensive plan. That narrative was in, included in the agenda packet for your... That narrative was in, included in the agenda packet for your review. As I mentioned, the following three criteria, staff believes, can be met in a very straightforward manner. This proposal went before Planning Commission on March 5th. As usual, they had a great discussion on the matter before making a recommendation to council. Their recommendation to council was to approve the expansion of the mixed-use overlay with an amendment to consider, including a concomitant rezone agreement as part of council's action. And the Planning Commission, with this recommendation for consideration of a concomitant rezone agreement, included two factors to potentially include in there. One would be to look at analyzing the capacity for requiring or encouraging affordable housing in Legacy Trails 3. And the second would be to consider language to lock in the commercial residential split shown in the concept plan, which really maximizes residential uses per the development standards of, under the mixed-use overlay, which is about 80% residential to 20% commercial based on either developable land area or floor area. We received one comment later today, which was forwarded to council. It was from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Their recommendations, well, first of all, I'll note that their letter did indicate support of this action of expanding the mixed-use overlay. And then they recommendation, recommended coordination prior to the future development phase to requesting a site visit to basically analyze those, those critical areas on site. Staff has put WDFW in contact with the applicant's representative to coordinate on that matter. With that, I think I'll go ahead and hand it back to you, Mayor, for any questions prior to the public hearing. Thank you.
Great, okay. Thanks, Ms. Lust. And counsel, once again, what I'd like to do is just go with questions only at this point for staff. We'll open the public hearing and we'll come back for any sort of deliberation you might want to have. So, with that in mind, I'm going to start on my right side this time. Any questions over here? Nobody? Counselor, oh, Counselor Wells, we'll start with you first.
I've got two questions. I don't know what the street is where it says "commercial." Yeah, where it says "commercial" there, there's a street in. I think the street on the right-hand side of our picture is Eighth Way. And the question I have is that is half, half-street in there? Be the south side? South side.
The, shown on the south side of this image, that is an internal drive aisle, not an external street.
Doesn't that come off of Royal?
It does, yes.
Okay. So, it comes off of Royal, so it would be probably Eighth? That's what the present, present street is right now, is Eighth?
I believe there is a private road accessing the site currently that is South Eighth Way.
Is South Eighth Way, yes, okay. And so, I guess the other question I have is that center drive aisle. So, that would probably be South Seventh? Right in the middle?
I would have to confirm that.
Well, I'm just going halfway between. Okay, that's all. I was just trying to orientate myself on it, so, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Verkell.
Just clarification, please. Building J, is that residential?
Yes. On the concept plan shown before you, all of the buildings labeled with letters are proposed residential buildings. I'm checking my report here. The concept plan shows those buildings, including Building J, to total 216 residential units.
Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton, do you have any questions? Okay. Going back to my right side, any other questions coming up, counsel? Did the applicant indicate why Building J is residential in that spot right there?
No, however, the applicant's representative is here and does plan to speak during the public hearing. So, perhaps that can be addressed.
If the applicant were to speak during a public hearing, that'd be good to know. And then also, is, this is a mixed-use zone or a proposed mixed-use zone. So, with that in mind, is there a, like a green, like, we have our 25% green space requirement for residential. Is there any sort of related requirement here?
There is, yes. So, the overall open space requirement for residential mixed-use master plans is 10%. And then, a code amendment was made within the last, I don't know, four or five years to amend that, that, to increase that percentage within the residential portion to 25% to mirror what goes on with planning developments, basically. So, that, that would take care of the overall 10% for this project as proposed with the larger proportion being residential.
Okay, so for that, that open space area, though, is that, is that actually usable space? Or like, what is the plan for that?
So, the concept plan does show a trail through the western portion of the open space and that would connect to the trail immediately to the north behind Legacy Trails. Sorry, eastern, well, no, the trail to the north. Yeah. On the western side of the wetland, but on the eastern side of the project. So, behind the residences, there is a proposed trail. It would connect to the existing trail to the north, which is behind the Legacy Trails residences and continues to the north connecting into Discovery Ridge.
Okay. And then do these two, does, does this, does this area connect to Legacy Trails Apartments, like directly to the north? Is, does that, do the parking lots and stuff, they go through? Or is there going to be like a, you have to go-
As shown, it would connect directly. The, the drive aisles are aligned.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions for staff? Okay. If not, I'm going to open the public hearing to receive testimony. If you sign up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called and you will be, receive permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you did not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. And if you're joined by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. The city clerk will grant you permission to speak. And when speaking, whether in person or virtually, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. And once again, no back and forth between the counsel and the speaker. Okay. With that in mind, this public hearing is now open. Do I have anybody wishing to speak? Great.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Keaton Ordin Baccallion. I'm a Land Use Attorney with the law firm Jordan Ramis. My address is 1211 Southwest Fifth Ave, Portland, Oregon. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant today to talk about the Legacy Trails Phase 3 project. I think I want to thank staff for the hard work they put into this project as well as the very detailed summary they provided tonight. Also wanted to thank, thank you all for your time. It's been a long one, so I appreciate you staying late. So, in terms of my presentation tonight, I just wanted to state for the record that the applicant agrees with the staff report as well as the Planning Commission recommendation of approval. Generally speaking, I think staff summarized the aspects of the project quite well, so I'm not going to belabor the points you've already heard tonight. Do want to bring up one aspect of the project that we do want to touch on tonight and that's relating to the Planning Commission's recommendation for the concomitant rezone agreement. We believe that, as shown on the plan, the developer's current intention is to maximize the residential development on the property as an 80/20 split as provided under the RMUO zone. That being said, as noted, the Legacy Trails Apartments are just to the north. They are as built. The legacy, or excuse me, the developer has a proven track record of not only producing concept plans for your consideration, but then actually walking the walk and producing them. So, in this case, we don't necessarily think there is a reason to enter into the CRZ agreement binding us to that 80/20 split. The reason is not necessarily for any self-serving purpose, but to preserve the flexibility of the purpose of the RMUO zone, which is to allow the developer to, you know, decide between either the residential development or the commercial development in the percentages prescribed by code. Because we're not at the development application stage, it would be difficult to lock us into that 80/20 split not knowing what conditions we're going to run into during the development application. If for some reason we need to do 78% residential, if we're under the CRZ agreement, we'd have to come back and have that amended. So, our intention is to do the full residential potential of the project. It's just that we have a little bit of an apprehension of being locked into that before we've even applied to develop the site. Think the other point on the CRZ agreement, the concomitant rezone agreement, is that those are generally prescribed to address certain adverse impacts or significant impacts relating to a development, such as parking impacts, traffic, et cetera. In this case, we'd be using it if we were to adopt the proposal of the Planning Commission just to just lock us into those splits of the 80/20. So, we don't necessarily know if it's really in the purpose or nature of the CRZ agreements in this case. That being said, again, we are intending to maximize the residential potential of the property. So, we have less of a concern if the council was to move forward with the agreement on that piece. In terms of the affordable housing piece, what we're proposing here is multifamily at 100% AMI. My time is up. I will go very quickly here, but, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead and finish up, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I know it's late again. But we're talking about 100% AMI here. We think that the multifamily development meets with your current intentions and policy with the GMA update as well as the middle housing mandates that the state of Washington recently passed. So, we do think that, as proposed, the project does meet that objective. And locking us into, I guess, an amorphous affordable housing provision under the CRZ agreement might be difficult for both the city as well as the developer to manage or achieve going forward at the application stage. So, we'd respectfully request no CRZ agreement, but approval of the project. And again, thank you for your time. Last thing, Building J is proposed in the location it is because of the on-street parking restrictions. Right now, you can't park on Royal and so, the Building J is proposed where it is for parking. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to give comment on this tonight? Seeing none, Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, great. Counsel, returning to you all for any comments or thoughts that you have on, on this one. And just reminded, this is first reading. So, I'm looking around to see if there's any comments. Okay. The only comment from, well, a couple of comments from me, I guess. We recently were looking at CRZ, is that how you said it? That's for sure? I like saying that easy, that better, okay. Yeah, exactly. You know, we looked at a CRZ for Royal Ridge just to the north of here. And counsel, there was some significant discussion around the multifamily housing there. And what, what I, I think counsel concluded from that is that we wanted to see some affordable housing and what, the way we attributed affordable housing there was at 80% AMI, not 100% as the applicant is proposing here tonight. So, I'd be curious to see what counsel thinks about that as a requirement. And I think what we're looking at there is like a 10% of the housing units would have to be at 80% AMI and 5% would be, have to be at 60% AMI. So, so, I mean, five, it's five and five is kind of what we're looking at, right? Five at 10%, five at 80 and five at 60?
Correct.
Okay, I'd, I would be interested in exploring that as well just because, again, going back to that discussion, we do have, we do have a mandate to, to provide 25% of our housing units should be affordable and we're currently at half of that right now. And so, I think that there's, there's some pressure on us to explore some more affordable housing options within the city. And so, that's something that I think that we can potentially explore as well. Thoughts, counsel, on that? Go ahead, Counselor Favella.
I agree with you, Mayor. Something that really, you know, I'm really passionate about when it comes to apartment complexes is making sure that there's like enough internal play space for kids. Affordable housing, you know, when we think of apartments, these are, you know, younger families or whatever, with small children living there. Not always, that could be a generalizing statement, but, you know, making sure that kids have access to outside play and enough space to run around where it's not just a lot of like parking spots to run through. Same, anyway. All the way down, please. Anyway. Yeah, so, kid safety, connectivity with the, you know, I, that is something I, I know we can't design this, but keeping children in mind. And in a dream world, your L O M and N would be like cutesy little cottage housing, lower density in the middle. So, it's like green space, walkability, play space and not just like density everywhere. Anyway, dream world, thank you.
Great, okay. Counselor Davis, looks like you have a comment?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely appreciate the, the developers' focus on maximizing the residential component of it. I, I still, I get hung up on Building J, just, I, I understand the, the need to want to add another residential building and, you know, there are other parking restrictions on Royal. So, you know, you gotta, you gotta position it somewhere. I, I just go back to, I'm not a big fan of, if we're going to do like a mixed-use overlay, having it where we end up with one commercial building and having one of the apartments on Royal. I would like to see the buildings that are on Royal be the commercial ones. And so, then people can walk up and down Royal, they can pop in and out. I think that's kind of what the intention of that area is and that's what the north side of the area is achieving. And so, in order to be consistent with that, you know, I'm definitely open if there's another way to shuffle things around to be able to achieve the same numbers. Like, I, I'm, I'm into that and I appreciate your, your interest in, in trying to maximize the property, of course. But to me, I think that the commercial stuff should be on, on Royal. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
You're getting some nods, Counselor, so, and I'll nod with you. That was my impression, too. You know, hearing the applicant during the public comment period talk about that, trying to go for that 80/20, seems like J is a means to an end to get to that 80%? Is, is that, do I understand that right, staff? And I'll look to the applicant and nod at me, yes or no? Is that what, where, is that, yeah?
There's certainly a lot of ways to get to that 80/20 split, certainly that is one way.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, along the lines with Counselor Davis's comments, you know, like for consistency, like what, what we see there is trying to do commercial along Royal Road. I think that also if I was living there, I wouldn't want to live right next to Royal Road there either. And I know that there's, there's a means and end, but also, there's also good practices and what's best for, for residents there, too. So, I'm in favor of that. Other questions or, or comments at this point? Yep, okay. With that in mind, I'll ask Ms. Julie to read the ordinance into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1449, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, adding the Richfield mixed-use zoning overlay to medium-density residential parcel in a Pioneer and Royal sub-area.
Great, thank you for your comment, okay. Okay, this is first reading only, so we'll come back to this in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Okay, it is now time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time to the podium or use a raise hand feature on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press star nine to raise hand and press star six to mute or unmute. Please state your name and make your comments to three minutes. We'll go to you, sir.
My name is Michael Jennings. Thank you again for your carefully logical management of Ridgefield.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Anybody else wishing to give public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Tweet and I'm here with an update on some information that I did send to the council in advance. I wanted to note that regarding this bridge and the whole light rail fiasco, that it, it all starts with the data that they are presenting to the public in this draft supplemental environmental impact statement. Turns out that the existing conditions that they are stating are from 2006 when there were 3,300 weekday trips across the I-5 Bridge, they say, based on a survey, not ridership data. data. And that's what prompted me to ask CTRAM for actual ridership data. And by the way, we have paid $200 million for this data that appears to be missing. But anyway, we collected the data, and we found out that in 2019, it was actually similar, 3,200 trips across the I-5 Bridge. And then, but the pandemic happened, there was a precipitous drop, and ridership today is about half of the 2019 figures. And in 2023, we see that over the bridge, there's only two express bus routes left, one to downtown and one to Markham Hill, OHSU. And then there's the Number 60 Delta Park. That's the one that they claim is that light rail is needed because of all the people on the Number 60. Well, we discovered that the weekday boardings on the Number 60 are just 900 on a weekday, and that's both directions, and it's also over a 19-hour period. So you can see, those buses aren't even full. But they claim that's why we need light rail, is to replace the Number 60. So then I did also show you before, the light rail takes about 34 feet up the bridge for those 900 people over 19 hours. We have the express buses, which they claim will stay, although they do sometimes go away when light rail comes in. So we would actually be trading an affordable system for a much more expensive system, for no reason at all. Then we have here the 25-foot bike and pedestrian path. Now, that is not required on an interstate highway at all. And in fact, most interstate freeways in our nation do not have a 25-foot bike, you know, has their own back and forth, pedestrians have their own. That's two lanes of traffic.
Thank you for comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move into council and staff reports tonight. Oh, one more. Mr. Akeley, go ahead.
Yep, still Rob Akeley. First off, I'm not on the board at Taverner Ridge, and I have no intentions of being on the board. You know, there's over 100 pages of CCNRs for Taverner Ridge. Judy, you've lived there longer than me. The other two counselors are newer. You may remember when, so, in the CCNRs, it says there's no parking on any of the streets in Taverner Ridge for more than 12 hours in a 48-hour period. The developer used to go around, he had a couple people doing it on carts, putting big yellow stickers on cars, and chalking the tires to see if they were there for more than 12 hours in a 48-hour period. And then a fine would get sent out. It was a real moneymaker, okay? Regarding the commercial vehicles, it was said, and so, no parking on the streets, that takes care of the commercial vehicles. But it was said, no parking in your driveway with a commercial vehicle, and people were getting fined. So those people would buy a magnet and put over their door that blanked it out. You could not have a rack on your truck. In fact, it even says in there, you cannot have a pickup truck larger than 3/4 ton in your driveway. I'm very detail-oriented. I've gone to all the meetings, okay, the HOA meetings. I don't know if you guys go, I haven't really seen you there. The CCNRs are one size fits all for all the areas, okay? You have the estate lots coming down Great Blue, you have the high-density homes, then you have the last phase that was built that is on, called Phase 5, on 1-3 acre lots with very large homes valued at $1 to $3 million. The city approved everything the developer did and allowed this to happen. The 1 CCNRs fits everybody. It had never been changed for anything. This HOA was left to the citizens about two and a half years ago with only $20,000 in the reserve for a community of 360 homes. There is no desire of the current board to fine or police people for parking in the street or in their driveways with a commercial truck, or going around and chalking the streets and then sending them a notification that they're going to get a fine. It's not realistic. So you may say, well, why don't you revise the CCNRs? The developer has refused to sign any documents to allow any of the CCNRs to be revised. There are many large, open areas in Taverner Ridge that are still in his name to this date, yet there's even a storm pond at the bottom of Great Blue and Lake River Terrace, that's all in his name. Now, we're gonna clean that up, but legally, we're not even supposed to be, it's not our property. The area behind my home, many, many acres, is still in the developer's name. There's several parcels. Anyways, if you need history about Taverner Ridge, I've got it.
Thank you, Mr. Akeley. Anybody else wishing to give public comment this evening? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online, Mayor.
Seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to council and staff reports. I guess I can start at the far end, we'll go to Counselor Hamilton, start with you.
Thank you. I am in my meetings era right now of my life. I had meetings with everyone over there, which was lovely, and I want to take a second to say how incredibly impressed I have been by all of you. Like, I literally could get emotional about it. I started crying, I was in a facial earlier today, and I was like, I've been surrounded by so many people that care, and like, it just, it means a lot, and I want to thank each one of you. Geez Louise, what a baby. Okay, so, thank you for taking your time to educate me further, and thank you for everything that you do. Okay, the State of the City was awesome. You did a great job, Mayor Cole. I thought that was, it's so inspiring to be a part of these events, like, it's really, really touching. Geez, okay. I also attended the ribbon cutting at Serenity Med Spa. I went to the Ridgefield Chamber of Commerce lunch and got to hear our mayor and our city manager present, which was awesome. I, on a personal note, went to the YWCA gala, that was so touching and so incredible. And I got to know Mary Kay with Main Street a little bit better, just to see what they're doing, so I'm just in my full-blown meeting era, and I'm loving it.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hamilton. I got news for you, your meeting in this era is gonna probably continue for as long as you're on council.
All right, Counselor Birkel, we'll go to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Cole. Just, I, too, was at the State of the City. Then the following Saturday, I had the pleasure of pruning grapes in the East Side Roundabout. I, too, attended the ribbon cutting at Serenity, and it's a lovely, lovely new business in town, and it just makes me so happy to see this. This young woman also has one in Astoria and selected Ridgefield as her second location, and downtown specifically, so pleased to have them here. Last Saturday, back to pruning grapes. Went to a wonderful meeting the other day at Playmakers for retired Ridgefield, and our mayor made an absolutely terrific presentation. Spent hours answering questions. Thank you, Mayor, that was wonderful. City manager briefing today, and just a little update from the port, the Osprey cam is up and functional once again, newly improved, and we should not, they should not have the difficulties they experienced last year. One other thing, they still have five yards to clean up from the pole barn pollution. And also, today, they removed another derelict boat from Lake River. That makes 11 removed last year and three so far this year. Also, just to note, boat passes are now all being sold online, and they're averaging about 17 boat passes per day. And that's my comments, thank you.
Great, thanks, counselor. Counselor Wells, we'll go over to you.
Okay. On the 14th, I attended the Clark Regional Alliance meeting when Mayor Onslow retired. I've been the alternate for 10 years, so I stepped up to the helm and sat behind the diocese on that. The 18th, the State of the City. On the 19th, the ribbon cutting at the spa. The 24th, Ridgefield Junction Neighborhood Association meeting. And for everybody's information, that's May 19th, will be the annual meeting. So giving everybody a heads up ahead of time. And then the 26th, we had a briefing.
Great, thank you, Counselor Wells. We'll go to Counselor Davis.
Swing all the way back around. Yeah, all the way back around, yeah. State of the City, I'll echo that, I thought it was fantastic. I thought that the video turned out great, and Mayor Cole, your speech was, I think, on point. I also want to give a shout out to, like, staff and our commissions, the open house component beforehand, I thought was really well done. I saw a lot of positive engagements, and so I'm happy to see that, and I'm hoping that, you know, we can find ways to incorporate that kind of work throughout the year. The next day, I did go to the Wine Down Wednesday that the Chamber of Commerce does about once a month. They had different wineries around, and they have food, and they had a charcuterie board, and so that's my favorite type of food, is charcuterie. Or it was referred at school as adult Lunchables, which I think is accurate. So, you know, any event that's got that, I'll probably go to. But it was great, in all seriousness, to talk to some business owners. Actually, the spa owner ended up hopping over there afterwards, and so I got a chance to talk to her, because the ribbon cutting was during fifth period for me, and so I was not able to make it, but I was able to catch up with her, and that was great. And then last, on Sunday, I did the Kuve Clover Run with Northwest Association for Blind Athletes. The athlete that I guided a couple weeks ago, I was able to guide again through a 5K, and we'd had a goal, cut two goals. One was to not stop, and two was to get under 35 minutes, and we got no stops, 33 minutes, so it was a success. We're gonna do another one next month.
Got you. Great.
Yeah.
I also attended the State of the City. It was a great event, as usual. Open house was awesome. I actually ran into somebody, I was like, why do you look so familiar? And it is a new, she works at Clark County Public Health, and we're in so many Zoom meetings together, and it was just nice to, like, see her in person, and she lives here in Ridgefield, and was like, I thought I recognized you. State of the City, and then I, earlier this week, I attended a public forum for Clark Calletts Fire District regarding their community tax increment financing meeting. It was really good, there was a ton of people there, and it was just enlightening, hearing all the feedback from the community. There was a portion about Ridgefield, but a lot of it had to do with woodland and surrounding areas, and how this tax increment financing could impact the fire district in the long run. And then tonight, I had the Fire Commission meeting. They introduced their seven new firefighters, so that was really exciting, and they actually have maybe an eighth joining soon, if all goes well. He'll be able to pop in, or she, I don't know, they will be able to pop in to this academy that they're doing. And last, I would like to, my exchange student, Sumire, is here from Japan, and she thought it would be really great to come to a city council meeting. So she has been here the entire time, so thank you for coming, and I hope it was riveting.
Great, thank you, counselor. Mayor Protem.
So I, too, attended the ribbon cutting for the spa, and of course, the State of the City, and those other events. And then I also, on Tuesday, was at a Clark PUD Forum for City Leaders, and about a three-hour session with them, which was very interesting. I sent out a briefing to all of you, so learned a lot of things about Clark PUD, and their challenges, the changes they're gonna make, and their metering, and very, very interesting, very interesting briefing from them. This morning, I was at the CRDC Board meeting, very interesting meeting this morning. There was a speaker there that talked about the differences between being in Portland and being in Clark County, and how the economy there is just like, it's just so, so, so different in Multnomah County than it is in Clark County, how we're just growing, and everything is going so well here, and everything is not going well there, it's just a place that no one wants to do business, nobody wants to be in their buildings, and everything here is just, it was just so positive about what's going on here in Clark County. And, yeah, very, very, very good information there this morning also, so that was it for me.
Great, thank you, Mayor Protem Schittman. From my end, you know, it's been a busy week. You know, last week was, of course, as mentioned, the State of the City, I thought that was a really great event, and for those who didn't attend or have not a chance to watch the video, you know, this council does a really good job, these are all faces for camera, and they do a really good job presenting ideas there. But all of that, there's an entire page on the city's website, and so if you go to the homepage, just kind of at the news section, towards the bottom, there's an entire page with, you know, talking about what we talked about, includes our council goals, includes the whole video. Over the coming weeks, there will be pieces, the sections of that video will be posted on social media as well. Highly encourage you to look at those. It was great, it's good to be able to break those up into smaller pieces, and then to view those. And then also, part of that was our Make a Difference Awards, and just one more, congratulations to our winners. Bill Baumann, who heads up the Green Bag Project, has a fantastic job. He had a week. He won a State of, or Make a Difference Award, and then he went and won a Rotary Award, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I heard that there was one other thing that he got recognized for.
Triple crown winner.
He was like a triple crown winner last week. Really, really proud to have somebody like Bill in our community. And then, of course, Compassion360, who is doing amazing things in our community, and just has a new, I call it a storefront, built in the Nazarene Church right there, and they, the church partnered with them to kind of build up this new space, make it feel like it's a experience where you can go to like a nice, like, you know, grocery store, bodega kind of thing. So really cool to see that. You know, part of the State of the City was, you know, this portion that I really focused on was this WAVE initiative that is, that we're rolling out. And for those who don't know, WAVE stands for Welcoming, Available, Visible, Engaging. This was a council initiative that council came forward with last year, and now it's kind of getting legs. And a lot of that was, was kind of attaching a bunch of different pieces to it. Big, big component of that is community engagement, and how we, how our council meets the public where they're at. So, you know, think for a moment, we're not doing office hours in a government building. We're meeting you at a coffee talk, in which Mayor Protem Schittman and I will be doing the council's first coffee talk, I don't think, ever, on April 5th, next first Saturday. It'll be at the Neighborhood Refuge from about 10:00 to 11:30. We'd love for you to come out, have a conversation with us, have a cup of joe, share some ideas together, and that's a big part of it. But there's also other portions of it, too, like, we're gonna update the welcoming signage to the city. We're gonna do things like improving the audio/video quality of these meetings, so that when you're watching from home, that you get as good of experience as you could get here. I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but we were gonna do that. You know, but part of that was, as this whole plan evolved, was sort of this pact, this challenge that we're making, where we would say, hey, this is what we are doing as a council, to better engage and listen to our community and trade ideas, and I think that's all very necessary. But the other side of that was a challenge to the community, to be, to be present, to show up with the things. Not that we have a hard time showing up, but to build a better city. Healthy communities are healthier when there is an active citizenry, so that's always great to have. And as a result, this last week, there was quite a bit of that, as was mentioned earlier and reports. You know, I got to attend the chamber lunch yesterday, was it yesterday or the day before? I forget, day before. And that was a lot of fun, we got to talk to a lot of business owners and the community. The real highlight was really the Retired Ridgefield Group, what a lively bunch. I mean, that was like, that is seriously the highlight of my week. I had to stop taking questions, because they had a lot of questions, and they asked the gamut of things. And it's always good when you have people who are really curious about what's going on, and who really want to know what's happening, who don't just rely on their keyboard to just kind of type out things based on their assumptions, but really to get involved. And then like the other example I'll give of a community member showing up is, comes in the form of a nine-year-old who had a birthday this last weekend, and it's my son, full disclosure, but we took him to Ailene for his birthday, not the gamble, but there's an arcade there. It's like, kind of entry level, I determined, I don't know about, but, you know, he did that, and he said to his friends, instead of bringing me presents, I would like it if you'd bring, like, foodstuffs or supplies, like, you know, toiletries and supplies. And then he was gonna do it in conjunction with neighbors, helping neighbors, which is holding a drive, a month-long drive with Columbia Credit Union. So... So, uh, the other day, on his actual birthday, we got to go and do a thing where he brought his big tub of things that he got, and he was just really proud of himself. I, I mean, he should be proud, I'm very, very proud of him, his mom and I are super proud of him, and then, yeah, it was posted on Facebook, and it was just really cool to see the community reaction to that, you know, that somebody so young can be inspiring. So, you know, as we talk about WAVE, those are the kinds of things we're doing, that's the challenges we're, we're creating for our residents, and just in a very short time, we're seeing residents respond in kind with just really good-hearted initiatives like that. So, really proud to be a community, community member here in Ridgefield. Okay, that was longer than I wanted it to be, but that's my update. We'll go over to Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the community. The only couple of things I wanted to add were, first of all, kind of piggybacking on our, uh, our award winners from the State of the City. We have Compassion360 is actually holding a spring break food drive, and that is March 31st through April 6th. They are looking for most needed items, including nut-free, soy-free, dairy-free, gluten-free, unexpired, non-perishable foods. There are drop-off locations, including City Hall. So City Hall and Coaches Cuts Downtown, uh, Ridgefield Craft Brewing, and Glam Beauty Bar in downtown Vancouver are when you can drop off those items. We want to make sure that we are supporting that. The last thing I would mention is, on April 19th, is Cleanup Day in Ridgefield, always a big day, and we're looking forward to getting the word out to all of our residents about that, and giving them that opportunity to bring things and take care of them. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for the city manager? All right, thank you, sir. We'll go to Chuck Green, Mr. Green.
So this probably comes as a shock to you, but I have nothing to add.
Winding down, are ya? Yeah. Over to you, sir, next.
Uh, I don't have anything to add either, but happy to answer any questions.
Oh, sorry, okay, yeah, you do, there is a couple of questions for PW.
Just a, a comment, Mr. Green. The cleanup on the property abutting the dental office and the area of the new roundabout, it looks absolutely terrific. That, that company has done a great job on removing all the invasive, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that, that is Riparia. And, um, that was my manager calling, sorry. Riparia is the one that, um, we've hired for that planting, they did, they cleaned up the invasive species, they're the ones working with Watershed Alliance for April 13th planting. There's another one coming up in May, by the way, too.
Well, they've done a great job, that piece of property looks absolutely terrific. One last question, how are we on the widening of Pioneer? On schedule, close, ahead?
We, um, we're, we're doing well. We're still assessing in the next couple of weeks, um, the weather impacts, but they're working Saturdays, they're trying to catch up, so we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Mr. Johnson, we'll go to you next.
Thank you. I do not have anything else to add tonight, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, great, thank you, sir. We'll go to Ms. Lust.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything to add either.
Great, thank you. Ms. Notenares.
Just a quick shout-out for April 1st Saturday. Coffee talk is gonna be the highlight of the day, but we're also doing a Discover Downtown scavenger hunt, um, that will, uh, take adults, um, through downtown and, you know, fun little activities at each location, um, that includes merchants and nonprofit organizations. And then we also have a separate, easier little scavenger hunt at Abrams for younger kids. That's about it.
We don't get to choose between which hunt we do, like?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Fine. Okay. Ms. Parker, we'll go to you online.
Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, um, nothing to report, but happy to answer any questions.
Great, any questions for the city attorney council? Okay. And then we'll end with Chief Doria.
Uh, nothing to add, Mr. Mayor, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. I know.